And I call this October the eighth meeting of the Alamo County School Board to order. We will now have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. And as required by law, we must read this until our minutes as long as we are meeting virtually. The minutes of this meeting should reflect that this meeting is being held electronically pursuant to Virginia State Law and Alamo County Ordinance. Because the COVID-19 pandemic makes it impracticable and unsafe to assemble a quorum physically in a single location. The meeting is being communicated to the public electronically through Zoom and streamed to live on the Alamo County Public Schools website. And public comment may be offered through the Zoom waiting room feature in accordance with the school board's protocol or by written submission. I will now introduce our board members and then we will move on with the agenda. And each member will give us a mic check. Dr. Kade Acuff.
Kade Acuff, Jack Jewett District.
Jono L. Carroll.
Jono L. Carroll at large.
Vice Chair Katrina Carlson.
Katrina Carlson, Rio District.
Judy Lee.
Judy Lee, Rybana District.
Dave Oberg.
Dave Oberg, Whitehall Magisterial District.
Ellen Osborne.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
And tonight, we are most highly favored to have our second school board student rep present tonight. Mr. Will Trout. So Will, will you give us a few introductory statements for yourself?
Yeah, for sure. My name is without, I'm a high school senior at Monticello. I've been working with Mr. Verhovak, Mr. Page, Johnson the last couple of months with, who, with them and with Malani. I'm really excited for this upcoming quarter. I think with the, with the connections and with the person, with the that I have with a lot of students kind of throughout the county, I feel like I can really give you guys an accurate representation as to the sentiment of, of, of high school students at large. And really, I'm just, I'm just excited.
Okay, thank you so much, Will. And we do look forward to working with you as our student rep for the next three months. We now need a motion to approve our agenda for tonight.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved by Mr. L. Carroll, second by Dr. Acuff, and I thank Ms. Lee that we approved the agenda. Mrs. Thompson, could you please give us a roll call vote for this?
Yes, to approve the agenda, Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. L. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Chairman Page?
Yes. Moving on to our next item, we need now a motion to approve the consent agenda. So could I?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, was it that Ms. Lee? All right.
I think it was a Carlson-Acuff duet.
Okay, Carlson, okay. So it has been moved by Mr. L. Carroll, second by Dr. Acuff and Ms. Carlson that we approve the consent agenda. Ms. Thompson, please give us a roll call.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. L. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Chairman Page?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Moving on to our next item, public comment. And Vice Chair Carlson will take care of this segment of our meeting. Ms. Carlson.
Thank you, Chair Page. I will be moderating the public comment tonight. I'm going to start by reading the public comment guidelines. The school board invites and actively seeks the public's input in the matters relevant to school board governance and provides for time during its business meetings to hear from Alamo County residents and community members. As authorized by ordinance of the county of Alamo, the school board will hold its meetings electronically during the COVID-19 pandemic. The school board is committed to encouraging public comment. For this reason, there will be two ways for the public to provide comment. First, as always, written comments may be submitted to the school board clerk prior to the start of the meeting and will be given to all of the school board members for review. Second, members of the public wishing to provide public comment during the school board meeting may sign up online by 2:00 PM the day of the meeting. The clerk will email Zoom links to the speakers on the day of the meeting so that they can log in to provide comment. Before public comment commences, I'm going to announce the order in which the speakers will comment. There are a lot of speakers tonight, I believe we're at 28. So I'm gonna do it in three, so I'll do three speakers and then announce the next three. Each speaker's access to public comment will be activated when it's your turn to provide comment. Because of the amount of speakers, we are limiting the comments tonight to two minutes. I will give you a one when you, when your one minute is up and when you have one minute left, and then I'll do this when your time is up and, and try to stop you. Speakers during the meeting or those submitting written comments should state their name and their address or their magisterial district. Speakers should limit comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governance or the operations of the school board. And although the school board will not respond to comments during the public comment period, school board members may address comments at the end of the meeting agenda under other business. With that, we will start. The first three speakers are going to be Tracy Polk, Kristen Brockmeyer, and Robin Mattern. So Ms. Polk, if you're on, you're up.
Yes, thank you. First, I would like to thank the school board and all school staff. I know this environment isn't easy to make decisions and there isn't one plan fits all, so we're doing the right thing and giving families different options. I have two students in the county in third and seventh grade. The point I wanted to make is regarding the nine-week decision process regarding the transition between the phases. If it's determined that pre-K through third grade hybrid format is working, why do the older grades have to wait nine weeks to return to in-person? Can't we evaluate every two to four weeks? We have lived in three other states, Louisiana, Texas, and Ohio. My friends' children in all those states are back to school and having success. We moved here from Upper Arlington, Ohio, four years ago. They started on time in August virtually, and currently, all their students in pre-K through 12th grade are back in a hybrid model and are planning to return five days a week in November. They are implementing the same phases we are and they're moving faster, so it can be done. We have friends and neighbors here in Albemarle County that decided to switch to private school this year. All their students are back five days a week and they are having success with their safety precautions. With the current phase evaluations taking place every nine weeks, my older son won't be able to have even hybrid in-person instruction until January, which doesn't seem fair when private schools and other districts have successfully returned to five-day in-person instruction. I do support a staggered approach to returning in-person. I just feel like the decision shouldn't take nine weeks to advance. The virus and a nine-week grading period have nothing in common. The self-isolation of the middle and high schools Zooms all day from 9:30 to 4:30 is not sustainable or healthy. They also deserve the opportunity to attend in-person classes. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Polk. The next speaker is going to be Ms. Kristen Brockmeyer.
Thank you. First, thank you to all the amazing teachers working hard under these impossible conditions. The World Health Organization and the CDC agree that COVID-19 poses little risk to school-aged children and is different from and doesn't spread in kids and to adults the same way as other viruses like influenza. In the U.S., 40 children aged 1 to 15 have tragically died from COVID. But there's 57 million kids in the U.S. aged 1 to 15. That's less than one in a million. During the H1N1 outbreak in the U.S., 300 children aged 1 to 15 sadly died. But we didn't close schools. Schools around the world and in the U.S., private schools in our county, and local youth contact boards in our county have all resumed and had no major outbreaks to speak of. Now let's talk data specifically for the valley. Of the 20 public school districts in our region, only eight remain fully remote and were one of them. Of the 12 school districts that did reopen, eight had and continue to have higher percent of positive cases than Albemarle County. None of the districts that reopened schools have had any type of COVID outbreak among students or staff as a result of reopening. And Amherst, Green, and Bedford Counties have infection rates above 6%, so again, higher than Albemarle County. But they already have PK through fifth face-to-face four days a week and sixth through 12th face-to-face two days a week, and have had no issues. Based on all the data available to us, I support an immediate hybrid model, not just for K through third, but for all grades and a much shorter evaluation period in between. The school board's job is to ensure that the best interest of the children is being met with an effective school system. Let's all, as parents and educators and as a community, do our jobs and make sure our children are the priority and that all decisions on going back to school are based on fact and not fear. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brockmeyer. Our next speaker is going to be Ms. Robin Mattern.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the time. I am in the Whitehall District and I have students attending in Western. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to the teachers and the administration for their hard work. Many teachers have told me the workload to prepare for virtual learning is beyond taxing. The quality of virtual learning versus in-person learning is just not the same. Just yesterday, Robert Pianata, the dean of the Curry School, did a live interview stating research shows virtual learning during the pandemic has caused disadvantaged students to lose 50% of their gains in reading and 70% of their gains in math. I am grateful to hear Dr. Haas recommending K to three to go back to school. The data point he referenced in the daily progress that 20 school systems in our region with 23,000 students attending daily have only had three outbreaks and only five employees testing positive with no connection to the school and absolutely no students testing positive is certainly telling as to why and how it is safe to be in the classroom. But let's not forget about grades four and five and even more importantly, our middle schoolers and high schoolers. As a parent of a seventh and ninth grader, I am witnessing this unsustainable virtual learning schedule. With just a few short breaks, students are literally having screen time or stuck at their desk from 9:30 AM to 4:30 PM. This self-isolation is unhealthy. My kids finish school almost every day with a migraine and are physically and mentally deprived and depressed. Teachers are having to rush through lesson plans, cutting out significant content they would be learning in the classroom. This model is not safe, it's not effective, and it's not sustainable. Offering all of our students the chance to be back in the classroom needs to be our top priority. We need to start planning now. Other school districts and private schools in Virginia are doing it safely. 18 weeks is a really long time for the self-isolation learning on top of being out of the classroom since last March. If transportation is a true issue, ACPS should be more transparent that more bus riders equals less school. Parents should have to apply for bus ridership, meeting a set of requirements. Thank you again for your time, and I hope we are paving the way for all of our students to have the opportunity to be back in the classroom very soon if that is what their family chooses. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Mattern. The next three speakers are going to be Megan Gaspere, Sean Boyd, and Irene Crone. Megan, if you're on, it's your turn.
Ms. Carlson, Megan is not speaking tonight.
Okay, thank you. Actually, our kids played T-ball together, so I can just ask you what you wanted to say. Next up then will be Sean Boyd. Sean, if you're on, it's your turn. Sorry, it's hard for me to see all the speakers, so I can't tell if they're on or not. I see his name.
I'm on, my video has been turned off. There we go, can you see me?
Yep.
Okay. So, the name is Sean Boyd. We have three children in the school system, all in the middle school at high school levels. And I understand the board is dealing with multiple constituencies here, but we decided to speak today because we're concerned that the parents and the kids for that matter aren't really getting hurt. We are heavily in favor of bringing the kids back to school. The discussion tonight is about moving from stage two to stage three. But frankly, as a couple of speakers have already mentioned, we'd love to move even beyond that. Here are the points I need to hit. Number one, virtual learning started in the spring out of the fear of the consequences that we might see if we continue to have the kids in the school while the virus is spreading. That made sense, given the unknowns at the time, but we're six months down the road now. We've got social distancing, we're wearing masks, we're being cognizant of how we're dealing with others, and it's working. It's working well enough that Navajo County, City of Charlottesville, and UVA students combined, we've had roughly 3,600 total confirmed cases. Our population is 180,000 people. So I'm hitting different numbers here, but it's the same message you've heard earlier. We're hitting 2% of the population. So if you stop and you think about it for a second, and you believe like we do that virtual learning is holding back the learning and the development of the kids, we're harming 100% of the kids in the county, basically to keep 2% from getting the virus. We're not talking about deaths, that's just confirmed cases, many of which are mild or asymptomatic. Second point, students aren't getting the social interaction they need. In-person learning requires lots of interaction with others. You see the teachers, your friends, your school staff, maybe a coach. That's all gone right now. Those interactions help you grow, and we're not getting that. The students aren't getting that. Third point, virtual learning is requiring massive amounts of screen time. This has already been hit, so I'm just gonna let it go. I think we understand the kids sitting in front of a laptop for six hours doesn't necessarily mean they're learning. Last thing I want to hear, we do have clear precedent on in-person learning and it can be done successfully. School systems in Europe reopened, I mean, very quickly, starting in May. Preschools here in the States have been open since the summer. Private schools, including several here in Charlottesville, reopened for the last month. So it can be done, and I'd like to see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. Our next speaker is Irene Crone.
Hi. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name's Irene Crone. I'm an elementary school teacher at Broadus Wood. I have been for 20 years, and I'm the parent of a student with special needs. I'm here tonight to say that I strongly oppose our school system's move to stage three. I'm pleased to tell you that how well my first graders have adjusted to online learning. We have a positive classroom community. Students are engaged in learning on Zoom and through Seesaw. My colleagues and I have spent a great deal of time collaborating to provide students with rich online learning experiences, and it's working. Moving to stage three at this time would be more disruptive than helpful to the flow of learning. For many, stage three would be like starting the school year all over again. New teacher, new learning environment, and a restructured classroom community. I believe that the AEA's letter to the board requesting benchmarks be met related to COVID-19 before moving to stage three is reasonable and is in the best interest of our school community. There's been no evidence provided that these benchmarks have been met. Also, without rapid testing and a vaccine widely available in our area, we must remain vigilant. My employer, even with the best of intentions, cannot keep any of us safe within a school building, especially in classrooms with young children. It's not developmentally appropriate to expect young children to adhere to social distancing and mask-wearing. Students will need to remove class, remove masks in the class to eat. We all know that respiratory droplets remain suspended in the air for up to three hours. Students and staff won't be safe. Universities have opened, including Notre Dame and North Carolina, had outbreaks and had to close. I have been mostly quarantined for seven months. I'm doing my part to protect my family and community and prevent the spread of COVID. Please do yours and vote to have our school system remain in stage two. Thank you.
Ms. Carlson, you are on mute.
Thanks, Graham. The next three speakers are going to be Susan Holly, Jennifer McDonald, and Erin Wise Akenbaum. Susan, if you're on, it's your turn.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I can turn on the video. My name is Susan Holly, I'm a parent in the Jack Jewett district. Speaking today to ask the school board to vote today to reopen the schools to the fullest extent possible. Our children have suffered disproportionately during this pandemic, and it's time for this to end. Schools have been closed since March based on the premise that they would contribute significantly to coronavirus transmission in our communities. Now that some schools in the country have been open for as long as two months, we know that's not the case. K through 12 schools have not been sources of major outbreaks. This trend carries over to our area where some public schools and numerous private schools, many cases with students in school five days a week have been open for a month or more with zero outbreaks. I would also ask that we look carefully at what the case theater in our area means. Well, we've seen the rise in cases with arrival of UVA students. UVA is handling the cases aggressively, and as our health district director said, we have not seen this spread into the community. Also, the rate of hospitalizations at UVA has remained stable, providing evidence that these outbreaks are not spreading to the more vulnerable populations. Also, we need to really consider how powerfully and adequate online learning is. While teachers are doing their best, I can't help but think of all the academic socialization enrichment that my second grader, also with special needs students denied in-person schooling, and other ACPS students have missed out since March and how far they're falling behind. Additionally, the lack of childcare school used to provide has meant that parents are struggling to work full-time, in some cases, losing income. Stage three needs to go further with providing more days in school for more students so parents can work and support their families. We cannot wait to reopen schools until the risk is zero. This is not a standard we apply to any other facet of our lives. We cannot continue to sacrifice the physical and mental well-being of our children and families. Teachers and staff who are at high risk should be accommodated appropriately and individually. For the rest of the ACPS population, mitigation strategies will reduce the risk so we can do what's best for the children of Alamo County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. The next speaker will be Jennifer McDonald. Ms. McDonald, you're muted. I know, I've been there.
There we go. I know how to do this, it's not working here. Is somebody muting me still, or can you hear me?
We can hear you now, you're good to go.
Okay, it just keeps flashing up that it's muted. Thank you. This usually doesn't happen when I'm teaching. I'm a teacher at Albemarle High School. I am speaking not just for myself, but for others who have shared their concerns with me. I'm coming up on 27 years of teaching, 18 of them in this county. And the move to stage three does not affect me directly at this time, but it affects my coworkers of ESL and special education students, and it affects my colleagues who teach the younger elementary students. And it affects all of our students who will be impacted. I stand here as a voice in solidarity with them. I do not believe that forcing people back into buildings when they do not feel safe will help increase the quality of learning for our students. I have friends who teach in other districts and regions who have done the hybrid and the in-person with masks, distanced. It is nothing approaching normal, and it is not superior to what we are providing right now in virtual. Nothing is better than in-person the way we are accustomed, but this will not be that. Not being able to see people's expressions, not being able to properly interact with peers, not being able to engage with class manipulatives, barely being able to hear student responses through a mask. These are not conducive to learning. I wonder how many students will continue in person like this. In addition, the morale of staff who feel anxious and uncomfortable being back in a building cannot help but be felt by our students. No matter how we try and mask our emotions, much, much less our faces. I know we want to believe we can be safe. I know we are looking at what rural communities around us are doing. But public health experts continue to say the numbers and rates in the community are what need to drive the reopening of school buildings. We may like to feel that the virus understands where the city lines end and the county begins, but it does not. Many who work in our buildings live in the city. Many students who will come into our buildings have parents who work in the city. The rates of cases in both the city and county are higher than when you voted to start virtually, and I do not understand what the scientific benchmarks are for making this decision now. I've heard from many teachers who feel unheard and that we don't matter. Please let us all feel that we are still valued, not just for what we provide, but as the people in this community that we are. Please be the voice for all of us to feel safe. Thank you for looking out for us, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald.
Thank you.
The next speaker will be Erin Wise Akenbaum. Ms. Akenbaum, are you on? I do not see her on my screen, so I am going to move on to the next three, and then I'll loop back and see if she's here. Next up, the next three speakers will be Sue, Xena, Forrest, Keck, and Jennifer Warren. So Sue, Xena, if you're on.
Thanks for letting us speak tonight. My name is Susina. I live in the Rio District and teach in the Scottsville District. My family moved here in July from Columbus, Ohio. I'm a new PE teacher at Mountain View Elementary School and a parent of a second grader at Broadus Wood. Our son and my pre-K to three students are the most vulnerable ages per need of consistency. Consistency in relationships with their teacher, classmates, schedules, and daily routines. I have never been more concerned and worried about the mental health of children, especially this one. Children who aren't thriving in virtual learning need help. All other children need the least amount of change possible. When I ask my son, as I will again for you tonight, Henry, if you could choose to continue learning virtually, go to school in person, or stay with your teacher, what's most important to you?
I want to stay with my teacher.
He wants to stay with his teacher. Relationships matter. By voting to move into phase three, one may think it's a great way to provide the option of in-person for those that want it and virtual learning for those that don't. But in reality, it's so much more. Regardless of choice, the changes needed to make phase three possible impacts everyone. Schedules will change, teachers will change, routines drastically change, classroom communities will change, risk of exposures will change, and mental health is going to suffer. If ACPS chooses to go forward with phase three, I ask that you please provide specific information about what each child's schedule would look like for each option available so they know if their teacher would change before having to make such a difficult decision. The risk of COVID-19 is scary. Mental health in children matters. By staying in phase two, the health of our children and
Xena, your time's up.
COVID-19 and mental health concerns, by keeping consistency for the age that need it most.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Forrest Keck.
All right, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, my video won't start, but hopefully everyone can hear me all right. So good evening, my name is Forrest Keck. I have a doctorate in infectious diseases. My wife is a teacher at St. Robinson, and we live in the Don Laura District. Tonight, I would like to provide evidence for staying in phase two. I want to provide an update on what we know about COVID in children. As many have said, thankfully, mortality rates in children with COVID are very low, due largely in part to children having a muted immune response to the virus. While on the surface, this seems promising, dozens of studies have indicated that while less than 50% of infected children display symptoms, they actually produce more virus in infected adults and can spread the virus twice as quickly as an infected adult, even if they're asymptomatic. While ideally, we would have 100% adherence to social distancing and mask-wearing, many teachers will tell you that such adherence is nearly impossible. I would like to know what contact tracing the school district has in place to prevent outbreaks when, from spreading when they happen. We must have a robust contact tracing and widespread rapid testing in place if we are to send children back to school where they could unknowingly spread the virus among their peers or bring it home to their families. Now, some say this won't matter because a vaccine will be available soon. But the truth is, we are not expected to have clinical trial results until the end of the year, with FDA approval not expected until early 2021. While several companies are starting to make vaccines in anticipation of this FDA approval, the federal government is anticipating the doses won't be available to the general public until at least the spring of 2021. In fact, several officials have predicted that it will take until winter of 2022 to produce enough vaccines to immunize every American just once. This is important because the immunity afforded by a vaccine is short. This is important because the immunity afforded by a vaccine is short, averaging between six and 10 months, after which time people can get the virus again. This means that until vaccine production can expand, it is unlikely for the US to reach herd immunity. I would ask that you strongly consider the broader implications of sending children back into classrooms without a vaccine and without a clear way forward to trace, isolate, and stop future outbreaks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keck. The next speaker is Jennifer Warren, and I saw her on.
Hi, um, thank you for taking the time to hear me speak today. Um, I want to extend my sincere thanks and appreciation to all staff, families, and students for working together to make this virtual start successful. I feel that we're getting into a groove and things are running smoothly. Relationships are being formed and fostered. Jokes, rapport, charisma, and personalities are shining through. Humor, care, thoughtfulness by teachers and classmates is also apparent. I feel guilty thinking of my elementary school ESL, special ed, and service provider colleagues and friends. Um, should I, who have asthma, volunteer as a tribute so that more vulnerable populations such as older teachers and those with pre-existing conditions be spared if they're not comfortable returning yet? Why should we make the move when flu and cold seasons approaching in the middle of finding our stride? Cold, flu, and COVID symptoms are very similar. If teachers are not comfortable returning in person, there is no other, and there's no other option if ADA accommodations are not granted, other than taking leave, retiring, or resigning. The youngest students will not have a typical experience filled with sharing in the experiences that we all want them to have. Um, there was a survey that, for the learning environment, I saw 67.3% favored virtual over 32.7% for hybrid for the optimal learning condition. I very desperately want to see my students in person, but when it's safe. Um, also, what happens when our, my pre-K and second grader who will remain virtual, what happens to them? Will they have new teachers? I think, just thinking about that makes me sad. Um, I don't feel that parents were given clarification about specifics of what virtual or hybrid will look like. There's so many questions that I feel were not answered or the information wasn't given to us. Also, it's, um, looking at the data, it looks like that things are increasing.
Your time is coming to an end, I apologize.
Not fluctuating, but thank you for taking the time to listen to me, thank you.
Thank you for giving your comments. The next speaker is going to be, I think, I think I do the next three, Jeff Handler, Debbie Stollings, and Janie Ballard. So, Mr. Handler, if you're on, it's your turn.
I saw Mr. Handler earlier, but I don't know if he, he left or
I think Jeff's, hi, I think Jeff is choosing not to speak tonight.
Okay, thank you.
I'll check in again at the end, but I'll, I'll just put a note. So, next up will be Debbie Stollings. And thank you, Ms. Ballard, for that information. Ms. Stollings, are you on?
I'm here.
Great.
Hi, my name's Debbie Stollings, um, live in the Rio District. Uh, I am a second grade teacher at Agner-Hurt Elementary School. This is my 31st year teaching in Almar County. And I really don't want to be forced into retirement. Um, virtual learning is going incredibly well. The relationships that I've already made with parents and with my children are amazing. Um, I know that I'm one of many, but I know that there are also those of us with the younger kids who are struggling with virtual learning. It's, it doesn't work for everybody. It doesn't work for everybody in every classroom, even if the most of it is going well. Um, a colleague of mine who teaches kindergarten said the other day, today was the 20th day. And finally, finally, I can say something good about virtual learning. And so, here we are, thinking about taking the time to make a change, especially for our PK through three kids who are our most vulnerable learners. It's true, they need rich learning experiences, but I'm just not sure you're gonna find a rich learning experience in our classrooms right now. We're gonna be six feet apart, we're gonna be masked, there'll be no small groups, there'll be no field trips. It's just not what we are used to working with and it's just not what the research says is a rich and friendly environment. Please don't uproot our kids right now, they're, they're hitting their stride. Help us, help us help the ones that this isn't working for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stollings, and I apologize for mispronouncing your name. The next, the next speaker will be Ms. Ballard.
Hi, good evening, my name is Jeannie Ballard, I live in the Scottsville District. I'm a teacher at Mountain View Elementary School, this will be my 27th year, 36 years teaching in all. And I just wanted to take a moment to welcome you into my virtual classroom here in my home. Never, ever in my wildest dreams did I imagine I would have a whiteboard mounted on my wall and that I'm using a step ladder for a portable teaching desk, but I'm making it work. And it is working, yes, we have problems. I mean, we glitch, Zoom glitches, but the kids are so perseverant. They're ready to learn, they're willing to learn. And by doing it here in my house, by them doing it there in their homes, we are safe. I've been challenged to be creative and innovative in ways that I never dreamed, but we're making it work. We are being successful, we are being successful. Do I want to do this? Absolutely no. I want to be in the classroom, but it's not safe right now. So, I want you to consider this phrase, "One size does not fit all." Each Almar County school has its own diverse needs based on its geography and its community. What works for one school may not work for another. If we transition to stage three at Mountain View, we're gonna go from having about 25 students to over 400. It's too much too soon. We're gonna disrupt the progress we've made by starting over, new routines, new classmates, new teachers, possible or probable quarantines, and then flu season's just right around the corner. It's too much too fast. I do think we can do a modified stage two because I know that there are kids that need to be in the building. But until it's safe for us all, it's just not safe. I could, I could go on and on, and I don't want to go on and on because you're gonna hear the same message tonight. I just want you to think that the word "yet" is what I use with my classroom every single day. We may not have mastered our facts tables yet. We may not know the order of the solar system planets yet, but we will. So, we just have to wait, we have to be patient, we're gonna get there, just not yet. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard.
Ms. Paulson, Mr. Handler has, has come back.
Okay, I feel like, okay, we can, we can put him in, in the future, I think we should just move, move him to the bottom of the list. Sorry, Mr. Handler, but it's a long list and people are waiting. But go ahead and, and speak now, because it was, I think, just your turn one time ago.
Sorry, and I'll just be short, I think the fact that we're voting on this virtually is all you really need to know, that it's not safe to be together yet. And so, I really encourage you that until you've spoken to every school and until you have done your homework and let teachers speak and not just depended on emails or on surveys with misleading questions and faulty data, then I just don't think you have the information you need to know that going to phase three is just a bad decision. It's bad for many different reasons and it's going to completely disrupt the learning of many kids in our community. So, that's all, if we can't vote in person, we can't be in school yet, so that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Handler, and I'm sorry we missed you the first time around. That, let me make sure that I'm getting this all right. As you can see, I have a very high-tech system here, it involves crossing things out, drawing arrows. So, the next speaker, Ballard already went, will be Dr. Hepner, followed by Emily Mathan, Mathon, and then Julia, Julie Govan. So, Dr. Hepner, if you're on, you're up.
Thank you, and good evening. By way of introduction, I'm an infectious disease board certified physician, UVA graduate, live here in Alamo County. We live in a community. The obligations of community are to look after the needs of the strong and the weak as well. We have a duty to educate, we have a duty to protect health. Although I applaud the plan and I acknowledge the toll that it takes to adapt to the stage two, I think we should bear in mind some of the points that Dr. Forrest emphasized. Firstly, the absence of proof is not the proof of absence. The asymptomatic carriage of these young children is true, it makes its relatively low risk for them to go to school. What we're not considering is protecting the vulnerable. Who are they? Those are the people that incontrovertibly are at risk of severe disease. There are common conditions, diabetes, smoking, hypertension, heart disease, kidney disease, that put people in significantly raised risk of exposure because exposures lead to symptomatic, it still remains an untreatable disease with unacceptable morbidity and mortality. So, quoting what happens at UVA or in other elementary schools is not apropos. I want to come back to what my plea to you at the school board is simple. Protect the vulnerable people. You have faculty and staff, teachers, bus drivers, janitors, who fall into these high-risk categories. We should do our utmost to protect their health. We ought not to compel them to resign because we cannot provide a safe working environment. And secondly, I ask you to consider and to further consult epidemiologists because when you have children, many of whom live with grandparents or people with chronic illnesses, when you take them from an environment where you do not control the transmission of disease, you're not equipped to adequately separate the children or to screen them for asymptomatic carriage, you are putting those people at risk where they come back and forth from school to home. So, my plea to you is to accommodate these people. Thank you so much, I know it's not a presidential debate, so I will stop when asked, but please to bear in mind what I've said tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Emily Mathan.
Hi, so I'm Emily Mathan and I'm in the Rio District. Can you hear me? Uh, so, the decision to move to stage three or to stay at stage two could be an opportunity to follow the anti-racist vision that ACPS strives for. Systemic racism is perpetuated when white privileged voices are the loudest and most listened to when making decisions that affect the wider community. My questions for you are, when you're considering moving to the next stage, whose voices are the loudest? Where's the pressure coming from to open up? How are families of color who we know are hit, hit the hardest by this virus being protected? What input have you heard from teachers? In the surveys you've received, are the responses representative of the most vulnerable communities in our county? Aside from surveys, how have you gathered feedback from the most vulnerable in our community? With cases growing in our region, how is this a logical time to increase face-to-face learning? An elementary teacher friend of mine shared with me the following. "The plan to move to stage three is not what's best for kids. Students are going to be sitting at desks or in small spaces isolated from other students because of social distancing rules. Students that are choosing to be virtual will have to change teachers in the second quarter to a virtual teacher, this is inexcusable. It's telling children that because they aren't safe in school, they are going to have to learn something completely new. How is this what's best for kids?" She says, "Leave us alone and let us teach our children and love them and wrap around them through this ridiculous pandemic. I can't even believe this is on the table right now. Every single school, them, school board member should have to come in and report to duty for stage two right now. Spend time in an elementary school and see what it's like in a stage two room with students back in the building. Come and help with technology and remind your kids to put their masks on. Step into the shoes of these teachers and students. I urge you to look deeply," this is me now, "I urge you to look deeply at where the pressure is coming from to open up and whose voices are being, are being loudest when gathering information." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mathan. The next speaker is going to be Julie Govan.
Hi there, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, my video is disabled, but I will go ahead. I am a parent of four Almar County Public School students, I'm in the Samuel Miller District. I want to start by saying to all the teachers and staff who have been supporting virtual learning and virtual learners, thank you so much. I have been profoundly impressed by the effort and energy that all of you have poured into this difficult scenario. I listen to the Zooms and so I know it is imperfect for everyone every day. We're having our ups and downs, and I know it's exhausting every day, but I also know that all four of my kids are learning and they're gaining new skills and they are making connections with teachers and other kids. I cannot comment, as Dr. Keck and Dr. Hepner have, on the, um, the plausibility of returning to school with current levels of pandemic. So, I will comment on this instead. Stage three proposes a return to school for some populations, including a wider group of English language learners and students with IEPs and also students who are struggling for other reasons. To me, that makes perfect sense and I'm very in support of that, given the successes we've seen in small groups of in-person learners. But where stage three falls down is in moving pre-K to third grade students to an optional hybrid model because this move unravels the current model for students who don't opt in, as well as for those who do. I cannot believe that two days of instruction mingled with five days without instruction is going to be as effective as the current four consecutive days of instruction. And as classes are sliced and diced according to who's virtual and who's not, I think we'll see a painful disruption of these beginning relationships that, that teachers have started to, to nurture. So, I'd like to request that if we determine the health metrics to be stable enough to move into stage three or in the second quarter, we move into a modified version of stage three and enable a return to school for ELL and IEP and other populations and a handful of other populations, maybe some access to sports, but otherwise retain an all-virtual learning framework that we've worked really hard to make a success for maximum consistency. And maybe we can plan for a robust four-day-a-week in-person model.
Ms. Govan, I'm up. I'm sorry to cut you off, we have stopped talking speakers.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, um, thank you for your comments. The next speaker is gonna be Chris Boonan. Chris, if you're on.
I'm here. Good evening, everyone. I'm Chris Boonan, an ACPS teacher, a spouse, a parent of three ACPS, a spouse of an A, a grade three ACPS teacher, a parent of three ACPS students, and our basement currently is a Stone Robinson Elementary classroom. We are 100% ACPS. The decision for the board and the school division is complex and difficult. Tonight, I want to speak to you as a parent and a spouse. First, I believe all things considered, the virtual elementary teaching and learning experience has been a success for all stakeholders in my family. Hasn't been perfect, absolutely not. However, I am impressed with the growth that I have seen in both my children and the elementary learning experience. The growth mindset is paramount in ACPS these days. In fact, the improvements I am witnessing leads to some questions and concerns. As a parent, my kids are finally getting into a rhythm and a routine with virtual learning, and now we may need to get ready for another routine. The most challenging days we experience are the asynchronous Fridays when their schedule is disrupted and we need to provide that structure. I have doubts that moving to stage three is going to significantly improve their learning outcomes. Have we allowed the virtual learning process to play itself out? I believe stage three is going to disrupt, not improve, my children's learning experiences. As a spouse, I'm impressed with the selflessness of my wife and her colleagues. They're crushing it and are going well above and beyond the call of duty to deliver daily instruction. Weekly, I estimate they're working 15 to 20 hours outside of contract time to design and deliver that instruction. I'm concerned that stage three is going to significantly increase our out-of-contract planning, and this is not a professional improvement for my wife. As a son, moving to stage three will require my family to stay away from their grandparents until the summer of 2020. Quite frankly, the juice is not worth the squeeze. And finally, the decision you're considering reminds me of Jared Diamond's book, Collapse, which evaluates the reasons why some societies succeed and others fail. One reason he submits is that sometimes leaders make decisions that place the pursuit of short-term gains at the expense of long-term survival and sustainability. It is for these reasons that I ask that you not vote to go to stage three and remain in stage two. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms., Mr. Boonan. The next three speakers will be Lori Allridge, Jennifer Andrasco, and Maggie Johnson. Ms. Allridge, if you're on. You may go.
Thank you. All right, so, welcome to my classroom. Um, my name is Lori Allridge and I work in the Jack Do It district. I am one of two African-American teachers out of 60 at Greer Elementary School. And I've listened to the school board meetings over the past few months and I just felt like it's time for me to speak up. I have been part of the vulnerable population that attend my school. We have students of color, we have language learners, students from all over the world, and We have students of color, we have language learners, students from all over the world, and we've been talking about facts. So let me just go over a few facts. We know that COVID-19 affects people of color at higher rates than other people. We also know that it affects elderly and low-income students. It's people. Our students belong in that population. We also have another fact that we keep ignoring. We have no idea how COVID-19 affects children. We don't know. We're speculating. One last thing that we know is that nothing has changed. Not one thing during this pandemic has changed. And as I teach my students from this classroom in my house, I teach them math and I tell them to read graphs, I'm teaching them how to read graphs, I'm teaching them how to collect data, and science, I'm telling them all about how scientists use data. That's why we know what we know, because scientists do the research. I'm telling them all of this, but we're not looking at the research. We're not reading the data. We're not looking at the graphs. You see the same data that I see. We often speak of equity. And we start the meeting with, due to COVID-19, it makes it unsafe to come in physically for a school board meeting. Tell me how it's safe for teachers and students to enter a school.
Ms. Allridge?
Yes, ma'am. Lead by example, I'm going to end with that, and rethink how stage three looks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Be safe and be well.
The next speaker is going to be Jennifer Andrasco.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Hello, I'm Jen Andrasco. I am in the Rio District. I want to thank you, Ms. Carlson, for being our representative, Ms. Lee, who I had the pleasure of working with, and for the other fellow Broadus Wood Elementary School representatives who've been on the phone tonight, who I didn't know would be here. I would just say that Suzanne Ab and Ms. Govan and Mr. Boonan captured everything that I was going to say far more eloquently than I will, so I'll try to be as brief as possible and perhaps yield them 30 seconds or so back. I have a Broadus Wood second and third grader. I also have a pre-K who is in private school in the city, and they are back in person. And so my comments tonight are not actually about trying to give you my recommendation on stage two or three. My experience in a private school preschool is that actually you can have a very rich learning environment with very young children wearing masks and being socially distanced. It is possible. The difference, though, is that my daughter started the school year with her teacher, with eight other friends in her classroom, and they all knew what the guidelines were, and they all had consistency in the teacher. She has had a cold for two weeks and she's been out. And we've held her out of school because, of course, that's what's appropriate. But what we know from the National Association of Education of Young Children, which provides guidance up to eight years old, is that one of the foundations for successful learning is consistent, positive, caring relationships. And what I can say is that our teachers have invested tremendously in the relationships that they are building with our K-3 students. I see it. I have a much better relationship with our teacher than I've ever had when our students were in person. Mrs. Zainab, capture it right, that a move to mode three right now would be more disruptive with new teachers and a new learning environment. And I implore you, Mr. Haas, tonight, to be very clear and clarify what a move to stage three means for those families who choose to remain in a virtual model and what it would mean for them before they have to make that choice. Thank you. And I'll yield back.
Thank you very much, Ms. Andrasco. Our next speaker is going to be Maggie Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Maggie Johnson. My pronouns are she/her, and I'm a German teacher at Monticello High School. My comments this evening reflect my own beliefs, and I do not claim to speak for my coworkers, colleagues, or school. I can only, I can and will only speak for myself. I'm tired. I'm tired from fear, grief, isolation. I'm tired into my bones physically, mentally, and emotionally. What I'm tired from, in a word, is trauma. What we are experiencing during this pandemic with the daily reminders of the death tolls, the climbing rates of sickness, the worries we have for ourselves and those we care about, it is all trauma that we, as a community and as individuals, have not begun to process. I fear, as others have feared, that moving the county into phase three will upend the routines that our youngest students are finally becoming accustomed to, and in turn, the routines of those students' older siblings, cousins, and family and friends. This phase won't directly impact me, but it will impact my students. Many of them will turn to their teachers to help process the trauma that they experience. What do you say to a student who tells you that their little sibling is sick with COVID? What do you say to a student who reveals that they missed class because their cousin was asymptomatic and no one thought to keep that child from hugging their grandmother, and now their grandmother has died and the child is left with that guilt? Members of the school board, I speak three languages, and I don't have the words to respond to that. It's not safe. It won't be safe for a while. We need to accept that and put our resources and efforts into making distance learning as effective for our students as it can be and into giving our students, faculty, staff, and community time and space to begin to process our collective and individual traumas. We need to come together and support one another, not spend every four weeks of this year haggling for our safety and debating how many people we can send to their school buildings at once. There's an undercurrent of irony to this meeting that we're all in a Zoom call because it isn't safe enough to meet in person to discuss if it's safe enough to send our youngest students and the faculty and staff who support their education back into buildings. I yield my time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. The next speaker will be Maria Radyski.
Ms. Carlson, Ms. Radyski chose not to speak tonight.
Thank you for letting me know, Christine. The next three speakers will be Tracy Bettsworth, Misty Campbell, and John Knight Jr. Ms. Bettsworth, if you're on, it's your turn.
I'm on. I'm just working on my video. There it is. Hi, thank you for letting me speak tonight, and thank you for all you're doing. So my husband and I have three children at Stone Robinson Elementary. We have a fourth grader, a second grader, and a kindergartner. We believe that there is limited to absolutely no benefit for stage three to our family. I can't speak for everybody else, but to speak to our three kids in elementary school. All of our children, like a lot of people have said, are thriving on virtual learning. The teachers are doing a fabulous job teaching, they're building relationships with the students, and they're encouraging the students to socialize and build relationships with their peers. The reasons we don't want to move to stage three? One, our kids don't want to be separated. When we talked to them about one going to school, the other two not going to school, they all got upset and started crying. After fourth graders at home, our other kids want to be at home. There's a huge inconsistency in two days. Children thrive on a consistent schedule. I think I've heard this pattern from Sue, from Chris, from Jennifer and other people. Our kindergartner, for two days, will not want to go to school. She's been home six months. When we even talked about her going back, she started crying. Same thing happened in preschool. It's an inconsistent schedule. Again, kind of like other people said, we would send our kids, or we would send our kids back to school if the option was for them to stay with their same teacher. Our kindergartner, our second grader, our fourth grader have built relationships with these teachers. They want to stay with them. Also, there's a significant increased workload and teaching on parents for three asynchronous days. I heard it from other parents. Our most challenging day of the week is Friday, tomorrow, our asynchronous day, because we don't have a schedule. If I have three of those days as a parent, potentially five, if my kids don't go to school the same day, it's a challenge every single day. We need clarity as parents of what those days look like. Will there actually be assignments, or are we just coming up with something to fill those days? As I mentioned, we would absolutely send our children back for four days or request to keep them virtual if we had the option for them to be with the same teacher. It's honestly ridiculous, in my opinion, to think that they have to potentially change teachers, change teachers. This will only hurt any academic progress.
Ms. Bettsworth, your time is up. I apologize.
No, thank you very much.
The next speaker will be Misty Campbell. And thank you, Ms. Bettsworth. Yes, I can.
Okay, it's my kid's bedtime, so they're in the background crying. I hope you can't hear that.
Cannot hear it.
Okay. The health, safety, and happiness of my family has and always will be my number-one priority in life. I have two small children and my husband at home. We've done everything we can to ensure our safety and prevent the spread of COVID-19. I am proud of what we've done for the safety of ourselves and others. I was so proud of the school board when they have made the decision to do virtual learning. However, I am now terrified. The thought of coming into the school and teaching face-to-face has kept me up for multiple nights, and I've shed more tears than I am comfortable admitting. Everything my husband and I have worked so hard the past six months will be lost. I'll have to wake up every morning and go to bed every night worried that I may have brought a deadly disease to my family. How is that fair to my family? How am I supposed to live that way? There will not be enough opportunities for virtual teachers who will be forced to come into school or take leave. We're not all in the position to take leave. My family depends on both incomes. Taking extended leave is really not an option. But if it comes down to it, the safety of my family and we're struggling financially, we would choose to struggle. My students have always been my second highest priority. I love my job and I miss my students terribly. I want to be with them again once it's safe. We've been making the best of each day. The kids are in an amazing groove and impress me on a daily basis, switching them out of their routines and everything we have built and worked so hard to do. Also, when the number of COVID-19 cases get higher, which they will, the students will be right back to virtual learning, once again upsetting their schedules. What's the harm in waiting nine more weeks? I've been working in my classroom during some of the past several weeks. My school only has approximately six students who are doing virtual learning in the building. During my time in the building, I've seen students walk to the bathroom without a mask on, eat lunch and run over to a friend face-to-face with no mask on, and students on Zoom who are learning from the school with no mask on. This is not from lack of effort and hundreds of reminders from staff. They're kids, and they don't understand the importance. Normally, running to your best friend and telling them a secret is no big deal, but sadly, in 2020, it could be deadly. By the time the teacher can get to the student, back to their seat, and the spread of COVID-19 could have already been transmitted. Thank you for your time and listening to what I have to say. I know I'm only one teacher in a county with over 1,000, but I do think that every voice should be heard, especially when the lives of our family depend on it.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. The next speaker will be Mr. Knight. Mr. Knight Jr.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, for some reason, I don't have the video on, but that's okay. Good evening. My name is Dr. John Knight, a dentist here in Charlottesville. On behalf of my wife, Wanda, and I, we stand to support Superintendent Haas's motion to resume in-school education for K-3 beginning in November. It is our hope that after tonight's public comment period, that each school board member will vote in favor of this motion. First and foremost, we would like to thank all of the Albemarle County teachers, administration, office personnel, support staff, and the board for everything each of you have, are, and will continue to do for the education of our children. Our sincere thanks and support go out to each of you for all the tremendous work you have done during these times. Both Wanda and I have always had the utmost respect and appreciation for all that each of you do. We know the tremendous workload each of you are carrying. Wanda and I are the proud parents of two boys. Richie is six, Riley is five, both of whom are in virtual learning with the amazing team at Murray Rutherford School. In spite of the tremendous efforts by our sons' teachers, Ms. Shammy and Ms. Franco, as well as the MLS team, virtual learning is failing our children. Both of our children desperately need to have, at a minimum, the proposed two days in school and two days virtual. As everyone here, I think, can agree, in-person education is extremely important, especially for this K-3 age group. This in-school connection to our educators and other students is vital to both the short and long-term success of our children. In the course of seeing families in my practices over the last several months, I've had the opportunity to speak with numerous parents, children, and young adults about their virtual learning experiences over the end of last school year, as well as the start of this year. The overwhelming response to virtual learning, in spite of the tremendous efforts of our teachers, is that it is not working. One of my--
Your time is up.
Oh, boy.
I'm sorry. Thank you for sharing your comments. The next speaker will be Elizabeth Whitehouse. Let me see if I see her. I do not see Ms. Whitehouse on the list on my screen, so I'm going to move her to the bottom for now. And the next three speakers after Ms. Whitehouse will be Ziana Ide, Cheryl Knight, Allison Weir. Why? I write down these pronunciations every week, and then the next week, it's like I can't get them right again. I need to save them all. So I apologize. Ziana, if you're on, it's your turn.
Okay, thanks. So I am attending-- Sorry, I am attending Henry Middle School online, and personally, I feel like we should be going back to school in person because-- sorry. Okay, so I know a lot of people will disagree with me, but going back-- I-- I can't pay attention as well as I did while I was in school in person. And I have some special things where I need-- So I'm not in school in person, but I have a thing where I have trouble focusing. And I also have three little sisters. When decide to homeschool, another one is also attending virtual online. And they can be distracting, of course. I'm the oldest. We have a rule in our family where we can't have electronics in our bedrooms or a closed room for safety reasons. And also, the internet can be distracting. So it's just me, but when we're online, we are stuck in front of a screen the whole day. And personally, after I'm done with school, I can't concentrate at all or not very well. So that's another reason. And my next reason is P in physical education. P in physical education-- in health, it can be-- it's supposed-- it's supposed to have, we're supposed to be exercising. And if we're in front of a screen on the health, we're learning about stress and et cetera. While we're being stressed on the computer to--
And you did a great job. Your time is up.
Okay.
Anna, you're awesome. Great job.
The next speaker is--
Go, Emily.
The next speaker is going to be Cheryl Knight. Ms. Knight, yep. Ms. Knight, I can't hear you for some reason. It doesn't show you as muted, but I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, now I can hear you.
You can hear me. Okay, great. Sorry about that. First of all, how delightful to have a young lady speaking. That was just a breath of fresh air, and I think that is why, as a teacher myself, I live in the city. I work in Albemarle County. I have worked in Albemarle County for 21 years. I'm going on my 33rd year of teaching, and that is the delight for all of us. I did just want to share with you, hopefully briefly as possible, just concerns that some folks have, that some of my colleagues, excuse me, have, as well as myself. And so one of the concerns is just the anxiety about returning. Several people that I have spoken with have said they would need to resign or quit or take a leave of absence because of their health conditions or for safety reasons for themselves as well. And this is an extremely complex decision, so I would not want to be in your shoes. Having said that, as well, the other piece of it is how well-planned-out is our stage three at this point? If we were to move to stage three, we have four weeks to get it into gear. Will teachers have time to set up classrooms? Because right now, classrooms are not set up. Will there be days off from students to be able to do that? How will asynchronous work work when a teacher is teaching four days of the week? So will asynchronous work have to be posted on one day of the week? Just trying to get those things straight. Also, how will breaks be ensured during the school day in terms of mental health for the individuals working? Those are my concerns. Thank you so much. I appreciate all that you all do. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Knight. The next speaker is going to be Allison Weir. The next speaker is going to be Allison Weir. Oh, Allison, we can hear you, but you are, sound very far away. Yep.
I'm sorry about that.
Oh, now we can hear you. Now we can hear you.
Yes, it's something to do with the new Delta tech. I've learned that since my first, the first week of school.
Well, we can hear you great now.
Excellent. Well, my name is Allison Weir and I'm a first grade teacher at Woodbrook Elementary. And like every teacher and several parents have said tonight, I am asking that we vote to remain in stage two. We are currently in the fifth week of school, which according to the book, "The first six weeks touted by our division is a time to go slow, build routines and relationships for greater academic gain later on." It has been said that the achievement gap is widening, but I'm wondering where this data came from at a time that is supposed to be less focused on academics, regardless of physical setting. One factor of this gap is attendance. I have taken an arguably limited poll talking with other teachers and I'm hearing that attendance is better than ever because students can log in themselves and can watch recordings of any classes they missed. After just now getting students into routine virtually, moving to step three will actually slow academic growth, as many have said tonight. We will have to practically restart the first six weeks and build community as everything changes, lists, in-person routines. And also, how are the parents supposed to get childcare for such a sporadic schedule? Administration has reported that many teachers want to return. If true, teachers should be able to volunteer instead of needing a documented medical condition. This is important for many teachers who cannot control their exposure, like myself, as I live with COVID nurses and could at any point unwittingly contract and expose my students and colleagues if I must return. Also, at this age, TAs are incredibly important. Do we have enough willing to come in to make this work? Currently, our elementary schools have twenty to thirty kids in them depending on it. And as another teacher said tonight and our nurses have said, they're struggling with distancing and masks. Step three keeps being called a moderate increase, but really, in terms of looking at one, one type of school, elementary schools, it will go from twenty to thirty to anywhere between two hundred and four hundred in one building plus teachers. There are many reasons why I feel it isn't safe or it isn't in the best interest for many to return. But I will leave you with this. Other schools have proven that it is not a question of if kids will get it, but when. It will be hard to tell if continuing, continuing virtually will be a good choice, but it'll be clear if it's a bad one to return.
Thank you very much, Ms. Weir. The next speaker will be Vicki Biggs, followed by Shanta Jamed, followed by Laura Gonyar, and ending with Amy Gertner. So Ms. Biggs or Vicki Biggs, if you're on.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
Perfect. Thank you guys so much. First, I would like to say thank you to you all. These are difficult times. And we're all between a rock and a hard place right now with no easy answers. The reason why I'm speaking today is I want to talk about the use of the playgrounds during school hours. My son is a kindergartner at Hallmeade Elementary. And this online format has left him feeling isolated at a time that he should be forging new friendships, experiencing all the things that elementary school has to offer, which is a new playground. The time of last month's meeting, there had been an email sent out saying that the students were not allowed on the playground from seven-thirty in the morning until six at night. And this Monday through Friday. Daylight savings is right around the corner and six o'clock is just too dark for many of our children to utilize a playground. While I would love for my child to return to school in phase three, I would really like the policy to be changed so that all the students learning from home, it doesn't matter what phase we're in, are able to use the playgrounds. So I'm requesting that the board open up the playgrounds for students at three o'clock on Monday through Thursday and then all day on Fridays. I believe this would be a wonderful enhancement for our students as this would strengthen their interest in class and engage them with familiarity between students. They would be able to forge friendships based on faces in person rather than on a screen and start developing a sense of community. So whatever the outcome is tonight, these students should be able to be a part of their school and meet their classmates. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Biggs. The next speaker is Shanta Jamed.
I'm just making sure. Is that Shantae James?
I have it written as, oh, I have it with the D on the end.
Okay.
Yes, I see in your email that it's S. James, so.
Okay, let me turn my video. Hello, I just wanted to make sure that was actually me. Well, hello, my name is Shantae James. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Mountain View Elementary School. As a teacher, nothing is more important than the relationships I form with my students and with their families. One of my main, major concerns about stage three is the strong possibility that I will lose some of my current students. Having a new teacher and new classmates after nine weeks of school can have such a negative effect on the students and their teacher. As teachers, we put our heart into our teaching and in our relationships. I have been implementing culturally responsive teaching in my classroom. And all that work in progress will be taken away with the move to stage three. All teachers understand the importance of in-school learning, but we are talking about the safety of our students and our teachers. That should be the most important part of this decision. We have been working so hard to do everything we can for our students, working even harder to make sure they are successful. Working, working hours pass our contracted time. We love what we do, but we would, we should not have to risk the health of our students and our colleagues and our friends to reopen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. James. The last two speakers will be Laura Gonyar and Amy Gertner.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
I can.
I chose to speak tonight as both a parent and a scientist specializing in infectious diseases. I support the recommendation of the superintendent to move to phase three. It is difficult to assess and accept risk for our children and our school community. I have been reassured by the efforts of our district to implement public health measures recommended by the CDC and our local health department. The goal of these efforts is to create an environment where the risk of virus transmission is very low, keeping the members of our community safe, even if someone were to attend school while infectious. After reviewing the measures taken, I feel that the benefit of onsite learning outweighs the risk for my family. It is my opinion that maximizing in-person learning provides the greatest benefit for our students and their families. In addition, I encourage the administration and board to consider offering more than two days per week of in-person instruction for young students like mine. Academically, I feel that this is the most effective environment for learning. In addition, increasing onsite time is also safer. It alleviates the needs for families, the need for families to piece together multiple childcare arrangements, increasing risks of exposure. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gonyar. The next and last speaker will be Amy.
Thank you. Good evening, school board members, Dr. Haas, ACPS educators and families. My name is Amy Gertner and I'm a resident of the Whitehall District. I'm also Henry's teacher. That was a pleasant surprise. I appreciate this opportunity to speak with you tonight. A school board will decide if stage three plan presented is well thought out and supported by the elementary teachers that will need to implement it. Educators have been working many long school days and weekends in order to provide the best virtual learning experience for our students. Many of us are here to speak and to listen because we care deeply about the decision the board will be making tonight. We have many questions and concerns about this plan. We have no answers on when and how our rooms will be set up. What will we need to pack up and where those items will be stored? We have parent conferences scheduled after contracted hours at the end of this month. At the same time, you may be asking elementary teachers to plan for in-person instruction. Lessons for a person, teaching will look very different. Students will be working together, will not be working together in groups or with a partner. They will not have an electronic device to use in school. They're expected to stay in their seat or space and keep their hands to themselves. In this stage three, we will not be kept in pods. We will be working with all of our in-student students. Our special ed teachers and TAs will be coming in and out of our classrooms as they serve students on their caseload. I'm still expected to be in the classroom while students are eating. Students will be permitted to remove masks indoors if they can remain six feet apart. Who decides if wearing a mask is optional indoors? This is not the mask policy the board adopted. Teachers are many things, but we are not foolish. We are rule followers and we know rules are there to keep everyone safe. We do not have the confidence that students and staff can be safe in stage three at this time. I do not know where other teachers are finding their strength right now, but I participate in a Monday through Friday Bible study. Today's leader chose the twenty-third Psalm. This passage is traditionally read at funerals for those who are grieving. This certainly is walking through the darkest valley in my teaching career. Your vote will decide the safety and financial choices ACPS educators and families will need to make next. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comment. Thank you to everyone that took time to share their opinions and thoughts with us.
Ms. Carlson, Ms. Erin Wise-Akenbaum, who was at the top of our list, has now joined us, so.
Yeah, and I've seen her name and I meant to come back, so I apologize. I'm sorry, Ms. Wise-Akenbaum. Yes, let's, please go. Ms. Wise-Akenbaum, are you on?
Yes. Okay, sorry about that. I'm, I'm sorry I wasn't here in the very beginning. It said I can't start my video, so I'll just keep on going. I'm, at this point, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm very opposed to going back after hearing teachers and parents and that are very fearful. One in every forty-four Americans have tested positive for COVID. Our sports teams, I don't know if we've talked too much about that, but our sports teams easily spew germs all over the place. And there with stage three, they're gonna go right into playing on the field. Maggie Johnson's trauma, it would be traumatic for my grandchildren to go to school and have teachers say, get your hand off that. Get your, wait, wait, be careful, be careful. It doesn't, don't put your mask on. No, I mean, you don't need to do that. We don't need to put children through that. And we try to avoid getting next to those situations with our grandchildren. I'm, well, with my grandchildren. So I just think after thirty-three, thirty years of education, I teach at Almarle High School, I'll quit. I'll be one of those people that, I'm not gonna put myself or my family through, through that. Thank you very much for what you do, because I know the decision tonight is very heavy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wise-Akenbaum. That concludes our public comment. I'm gonna hand it back to you, Chair Page.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Carlson. We will now move, and again, I think, as Ms. Carlson did, I think also all about people who did make public comment. Thank you so much for giving us your input. We are now ready for Spotlight on Education. And it's my honor this evening to introduce one of the most important and uplifting achievements in the recent history of our school division, in fact, of any division. On September the twenty-fifth, we joined the U.S. Department of Education and the Virginia Department of Education in announcing that Baker Butler Elementary School had received the prestigious Blue Ribbon Award for exemplary achievement. This was the first time in the thirty-eight-year history of the award program that a school in Virginia earned this award for closing achievement gaps. It was a remarkably important moment, not only for our school division, but really for any division in our nation that struggles to achieve educational equity. That's a pretty high number. The award covers three years of data, and here's what Baker Butler students were able to achieve. Every student membership group improved their SOL scores between twenty and thirty percent. And the entire school average increased to ninety-one percent in reading and ninety-four percent in math. The pass rates for Black students increased from forty to eighty percent in reading and from thirty-eight to ninety percent in math. Our special education students made gains between forty and sixty percent in both reading and math. Students from economically disadvantaged homes increased their path rate, pass rates from forty-three to eighty-three percent in reading and from forty-nine to ninety percent in math. And all of those are truly, truly outstanding achievements. Pass rates for ESOL students were ninety-two percent in reading and ninety-seven percent in math. The gap between Hispanic students and the overall pass rate for all students was eliminated. Achievement gaps between white and Black students shrank from forty to thirteen percentage points in reading and from forty to sixty percentage points in math. And again, outstanding achievements. I really liked the comments of one of our guests this evening, Dr. Steve Saunders, who was Baker Butler's principal during the award period. He said that schools' awards is not about numbers. It's about meeting the needs of each individual student. And I really liked something else he said also. There is no magic formula for the results that earned his school this award. Every school, every school, he said, can do this. With us this evening is Dr. Saunders, together with the school's current assistant principal, Christine Peterson, and a very special guest, Dr. Marie Baker, the widow of John Baker, for whom the school is named. I'd like to invite each of our visitors here to share some thoughts with us about the significance of this extraordinary achievement and what it means for the future of K-12 public education here in Almarle County. Dr. Saunders, Mrs. Peterson, Dr. Baker.
Thank you, Chair Page. I appreciate it. Good evening, members of the school board. As Chairman Page said, my name is Steve Saunders. I'm proud to be the principal of Greer Elementary School and I'm also proud to have been the principal at Baker Butler Elementary School from two thousand fourteen to two thousand nineteen. And in that role, I've been asked to prepare a couple remarks tonight. Baker Butler, as you know, was recently honored for the National Blue Ribbons Award. And I join you all in sending heartfelt congratulations to the staff at Baker Butler. Like all of you, I am very proud of the staff and the students and the families at Baker Butler. And I am honored and humbled to have worked with an outstanding crew there, including our fantastic assistant principals Wendy Eckery and Christine Peterson. And I know that the staff and the students and the families of Baker Butler, both past and present, are deservedly proud of this achievement. I'd like to frame my remarks tonight by saying that this award allows us to do two things. First, to pause and to celebrate the award. And second, to recognize that this work can be done. First, we should, we should celebrate them. This is a momentous achievement. They've worked very hard for it and they should be very proud of it. And the fact that they earned a National Blue Ribbon Award for closing achievement gaps just makes the award that much sweeter. What they have accomplished is incredibly difficult and rare, and they deserve all the good words and credit that's going to them now. But in addition to celebrating, more importantly, the second thing I'd invite us to do tonight is to, to consider that this work can be done. As educators, we know that when we see gaps between and among our students, we can sometimes feel overwhelmed and powerless and depressed. But instead of feeling that way, I'd like us to remember to frame these gaps differently and instead view them as opportunities and possibilities. That's what we did at Baker Butler. That's what we do every day at Greer and I know that's what we do across the county and Almarle. Let's look at these as challenges, as opportunities, and work together towards a common mission and vision. Let's allow this award to serve both as an inspirational and an aspirational goal for us all. There is no secret recipe to their success. No hidden process, no magic, no hidden strategy. The work is hard. It is challenging. It is difficult, but it is possible. It can be done. Their success was the result of a collective effort, collective efficacy, their commitment to a shared vision and value, their innovative strategies brought around about with design thinking methodologies and the alignment of the entire school around effective research-based educational practices. But perhaps most importantly, we close gaps because the students knew their students and their families on a deep level and they use these relationships to inspire, to understand, to push, to challenge, and to encourage, and to celebrate each student as an individual. Closing gaps is not about numbers. It's about names. And that is what we value in Almarle County. And every student, every individual student matters. Every individual child matters every day. And with the attention that comes naturally with winning an award as prestigious as this, it might be easy to focus on the numbers and the data and that, that led to this recognition. But I would urge us instead, however, to consider that the true success of Baker Butler is not about numbers, but it's instead the deep commitment to ensure that every individual child is known and cared for and challenged and that every individual child and that every individual child can learn and achieve every day at high levels. This work is both inspirational and aspirational for us all. The work is hard, but it is our work, and it can be done. That commitment started before I began at Baker Butler. It was clearly evident when I was there, and I know that it continues to this day. The staff, students, and families of Baker Butler, both past and present, have earned this award, and they deserve it. And I enjoy, I join all of you in congratulating them. And I'm I'm privileged to to yield the floor to Christine Peterson, who has deep roots at Baker Butler and will speak on behalf of the school at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Saunders. Good evening. I'm Christine Peterson, and this is my third year serving as Baker Butler's assistant principal. But as Steve alluded, I have deep roots at Baker Butler because I also started my teaching career there. I'm honored to represent our school. Principal Kennard and I are proud of the Baker Butler staff, students, and families. We echo what Mr. Saunders believes, that every child can and will learn at high levels. Our school community remains deeply committed to forging nurturing and supportive relationships with students and families. In the last couple of years, we focused on culturally responsive teaching practices, which pushes us to reflect on our own cultural lenses. We are committed to learning to incorporate the cultural influences of our students, how to best teach to and through culture, and digging in and cultivating positive learning relationships with students and families. Baker Butler's commitment to a shared vision and collective efficacy remains strong. We value our professional learning community work and are committed to using the Plan Do Study Act framework to examine student learning success and our instructional methods to ensure we're using effective, research-based educational practices. This award not only recognizes the depth and talent and dedication of our staff, but also the perseverance of our students. Learning is a process, and this Blue Ribbon Award allows us to pause and affirm which decisions and practices have attributed to our success. However, it also humbles us to keep working hard and staying focused because every student deserves this level of success, and our work is never done. Thank you. I'm gonna now turn it over to Mrs. Baker.
Thank you very much. Dr. Haas, Mr. Graham, school board members, and the staff of Baker Butler School. I am so proud of Baker Butler Elementary School. First, for closing the achievement gap, and second, for being named a Blue Ribbon School by the United States Department of Education. I am sure that my late husband, John Baker, after whom the school is named, along with Mr. Butler, is smiling on all of us and all of you with pride for your outstanding and effective work with culturally responsive teaching. I have always been impressed by the warmth and caring demonstrated when I visited the school. It's like a very happy place for students and faculty and staff who all seem so excited to be there. John used to talk about apples for his teachers each fall. I've continued that practice, but of course with COVID nineteen, I can't bring apples this fall. Instead, I give you virtual apples and chocolates, too, for this wonderful achievement. Pardon me, of recognizing you've been recognized for closing the achievement gap over the last three years. May this Blue Ribbon Award inspire you at Baker Butler to sustain this status and inspire other schools to do the same. Thank you so much, and congratulations again.
Thank you so much, Mr. Saunders, Mrs. Peterson, and Dr. Baker. And we do, like Mr. Saunders was saying, we do pause to celebrate this achievement, and we also pause to reflect because we realize that programs that we have put into place, like CRT, truly do work. And so we expect the success at Baker Butler to be replicated throughout the county. So again, we thank all three of you for being here. And do any of our school board members have questions or comments for Mr. Saunders, Ms. Peterson, or Dr. Baker?
Yeah, I have just just two quick things. One, I want to point out that Christine Peterson was the glue between the Steve Saunders years and the Seth Kennard years, just pointing that out. Um, at some point, and I don't know that it's gonna be tonight, given some time constraints, but I, in addition to the CRT aspect of this, I'd love to be able to do a deeper dive into the how. You know, what were the 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 programs that you put in place? What was the in-house training for some of the teachers and perhaps, you know, PD work? In addition to work with Dr. Hairston and the CRT program. Um, you know, perhaps it would be on Zoom, another Zoom call, but that's something I would really love to delve into. And I think other members of the board might have an interest in that, too. Congratulations to you all.
I would second Jono's comments about making sure that we're sharing our successes so that other schools can replicate. I would want to say hi to Ms. Baker. I haven't seen you at the gym recently, but it looks like you did well. Uh, and thank you guys so much. I'm so incredibly proud of the success that that you've had. So thank you.
Are there other comments? And Ms. Baker, we do look forward. Was you off of sending virtual candy and chocolates to the whole board or to just?
I can send that too virtually.
Okay, all right. We'll look for that to happen then. Thanks so much to all three of you.
Thank you.
Okay, item announcements. Dr. Haas.
Thank you, Mr. Page, and I wanted to say hi to Dr. Baker. I'm really, it's such a treat to see her here tonight. Hi, hi, Marie. And um, we're, uh, we, there won't be the the Baker Dinner this year on October sixteenth. However, there will be a celebration of African-American Teaching Fellows on October sixteenth. So I'm hoping everybody will take time to go to the African-American Teaching Fellows page. And if it moves you to make a contribution to that organization, which provides outstanding teaching and leadership professional development for some of our best teachers that we've hired at the county and and hope to retain. I also want to congratulate Steve and Christine and Seth and all the teachers at Baker Butler. This is outstanding work, and back to Steve's comments, it can be done and it should be done. I'd want to make a quick announce, two quick announcements. One is that we are establishing a name review committee for Virginia L. Murray Elementary School. Murray employees and community will receive an announcement tonight. Jasmine Fernandez and I and I will be meeting with Principal Allison Dwyer-Selden and school staff tomorrow morning at eight-thirty. As you recall, the board directed me to review the names of all schools named after people on October twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen. I'm choosing Murray Elementary School now because through circumstances over time, Virginia Murray is the namesake of two Alamo County public schools. Yes, this is a fact. Murray Elementary was established as a school for African-Americans in nineteen sixty and was desegregated in nineteen sixty-five. The school was named for Virginia L. Murray, a Virginia native, and the very first African-American supervisor in Alamo County. When A C P S created a charter high school in nineteen eighty-eight, it needed a facility, and Virginia L. Murray Elementary School was closed. The school was housed there and took the school's name for the charter school, Murray High School. In nineteen ninety, Virginia L. Murray School, Virginia L. Murray Elementary School reopened. The charter high school moved to its current location and took its name with it. Thus, we have two schools named after the same person. Incidentally, the original school at Murray Charter School site was named Rose Hill Elementary School. It closed in nineteen ninety and moved to what is now Mountain View Elementary School, which opened as Paul H. Kale Elementary School in nineteen ninety. There will be a quiz at the end of the meeting. In order to have resolution for Murray Charter School with regard to its name as it is a new school now, by combining Murray High School and Community Public Charter School, I think it is important to also address and review the name of Murray Elementary School so that we can have some clarity in that process. The second announcement I have is really exciting. Some members of this board, our community may recall, and our community may recall that in two thousand eighteen, we learned of an application before the Virginia Department of Historic Resources to add our own Burley Middle School building to the state's historic register of landmarks. The department approved that application last month, as well as the designation of another site with significance to our division. In the Burley application, the school is described as, and I here quote, "the V D H R" from their document. It is locally significant in the areas of education and ethnic heritage. African-American as a rare instance in which two localities sought to achieve equal education facilities during the segregation era. The building and opening of Jackson P. Burley High School proved to be the last substantial effort prior to the nineteen fifty-four Supreme Court's overturning of the infamous Plessy versus Ferguson decision that called for separate but equal in both public accommodations and in schools. It added that the building itself retains a high degree of architectural integrity as one of the earliest examples in the region of the application of the modern movement into an education building. One of the most meaningful tributes to the historic importance of this school's building is the degree to which the school's educators have made the school's history such a continuing learning opportunity for the students who have come through its halls. I express my thanks and appreciation to you all have kept this history before us. And of course, our own school board chair, Graham Page, is a member of the Jackson P. Burley High School graduating class of nineteen sixty-four. The department also added to its register Riverview Farm. The farm once was owned by Hugh Carr, a former slave and the father of Mary Carr Greer. Mary Greer was a distinguished educator for two decades at Alamo Training School, the only secondary school open to black students during the segregation segregation era. Her contributions are recognized, of course, in the name of one of the most diverse schools in our division. So that's really exciting news about Burley, and those are my announcements for tonight. Thank you, Mr. Page.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Haas. And I am a proud graduate of Jackson P. Burley High School. And with all of the things.
Photograph is on the wall, as I recall.
What?
Your your class photograph is on the wall.
Oh, yes, it is.
There's a very handsome photograph, too.
I'm not sure. The picture's not the best of quality, but anyway, it's there. And like Dr. Haas said, there is a quiz, and so maybe if we could convince Mrs. Baker to send some real chocolate and some real apples to us, we could use those things as like prizes for doing good on the quiz. So, Dr. Baker, see what you can do. I also have an announcement, too. Quite a few people mentioned tonight that we should maybe try to do a better process of announcing what move or what phase we will be moving into as we move along during the year. So as we recall on our calendar, December the tenth is the date that we had set aside to receive the next recommendation from Dr. Haas. And I'd like to propose and would like a motion to allow us to have a meeting on December the seventeenth so that we can hear the motion or hear his recommendation on one day and then vote on it on the next. And during that time, we'd be able to receive probably some more feedback from our parents and students and community members. So, are there any questions or could I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Oberg, second by Ms. Lee, and I think Dr. Akoff, that we have a meeting, a special meeting on December the seventeenth to vote on Dr. Haas's recommendation about what phase we'll move into during the third nine weeks. So is there any discussion on that motion?
Okay, Mr. Chair, I was a bit, perhaps a bit confused. Did you say November or December seventeenth? Okay.
Ms. Thompson, could you please call the role on that motion?
Yes, sir. That was December seventeenth, correct, Chairman Page?
Right.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Dr. Akoff?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
And Chairman Page?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. We will now move to our school division business. First item here, Croze Elementary additions and renovations. Mrs. Lindsay Snotty will lead this discussion for us.
Good evening. I'm Lindsay Snotty. I'm deputy director of the Building Services Department. And per school board policy, the board must approve the schematic and design development plans of major construction projects. A schematic design of the Croze Elementary additions and renovations was approved on July ninth. This project will add approximately thirty-five thousand square feet in total additions to the building, as well as making improvements to the existing building in sight. The additions will include a net gain of sixteen classrooms, one special ed classroom, two smaller resource classrooms, two conference rooms, two offices, a faculty workroom, and various support spaces. The additions will also expand the kitchen cafeteria and media center. Other improvements to the existing building will include the replacement of existing HVAC serving the existing classrooms. And we have some exciting news to share about that portion of the project as well. The current schedule has the project completed for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. However, funding for construction has not yet been appropriated. The school board will have a series of conversations with the board of supervisors beginning in a couple of weeks to discuss capital project funding. Ken Thacker with B M D O will present the design development plans and budget scenarios. Tonight, this is for information only. At the next meeting, we will recommend approval of the design development plans and authorization to proceed with construction documents. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Lindsay. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to share my screen and show you a few slides. Here we go. Well, thank you again. First of all, I would like to tell you that congratulations are in order. Earlier today, I came from a virtual award ceremony and can can announce to you that Croze Elementary School was tonight named winner of A I A Virginia's twenty-twenty Test of Time Award. This honor is given annually to buildings of enduring significance. The original school was designed in nineteen eighty-nine with an architecture that is reflective of the modest, tight-knit, yet aspirational community that it serves. In fact, this is only the second school to win the award in the forty-year history of the program. The other school, incidentally, was our nineteen eighty design for Scottsville Elementary, also right here in Alamo County. This award speaks to Alamo County's longstanding quest to realize quality school buildings uniquely suited to their place. On our current project, we have completed our design development phase, the middle of three phases of design. So we are two-thirds complete with the design process. We are aiming to complete our design work in the next few months so that the documents can be issued for bidding as early as January of the new year. Our design concepts have remained virtually unchanged since I last spoke to you, presenting our schematic design plans. However, there are a few changes to note. You will remember that Croze Elementary has entered at the upper level, and so this is the upper-level floor plan at the front door. You you'll note that we are now planning for a new replacement kitchen, as Lindsay mentioned, rather than renovating the old one. This will allow construction to take place during the school year without interrupting meal service at the school. We've also added a pre-K classroom that is needed for that program. We've also combined the movement room addition with the classroom addition. We have pulled the new construction closer to the existing school to better protect the stream buffer along Parrot Branch. And Parrot Branch, incidentally, is visible from the the classrooms on the lowest level. Of the school seen in this plan. Our recent work has involved intricate and detailed planning to ensure that work can safely take place. On an operating school campus while school is in session during the twenty one and twenty two school year. And in the two summers that bracket that construction schedule. So that's fifteen months of construction overall. In describing the scope of the project, Lindsay mentioned that these details have been exhaustively reviewed. Over the last six months by our eight member design committee. This group is composed of cabinet level educators, building services leadership, and Croze Elementary principal. They have evaluated our many design iterations and have made decisions that ensure the greatest possible impact on Croze's learners. And the greatest possible value for county budget stewards. Classrooms are, of course, the fundamental building block of any school. And in a change from the original C I P. Our committee prioritized mechanical renovation work in the existing building to improve system reliability and deliver adequate fresh air. We are particularly excited about the geothermal heating and cooling system that will serve every room in the expanded school, not just in the addition. But also in the original classrooms. Which will allow us to eliminate a troublesome oil fired heating system. The geothermal system will be the first of its kind in Albemarle. And is certainly aligned with the goals of the county's recently adopted climate action plan. Our work on the site of the school includes an enlargement of the existing playground. New play equipment and a walking track. These things were inspired by community input. And we are working to ensure that all will be in compliance with regulatory requirements. I think this is definitely one of the things that that Ms. Crummy and the school staff are are very excited about. In fact, last Friday, we were a part of a virtual staff meeting with the Croze faculty. We presented our design progress to date. We reviewed early feedback that was solicited from teachers, students, and parents. And explained how those insights informed our decision making. Soon, Ms. Crummy will convene a group of teachers and students to help with planning an environmental graphics package. That will offer clear wayfinding, but also reinforce themes that are important to Croze's school culture. In as much as we are happy with the design progress we've made, we continue to struggle with the project's construction budget. Established several years ago during the C I P process. At fifteen million, six hundred fifty thousand dollars. Our most recent cost estimate shows our design at sixteen million, seven hundred thousand dollars. A difference of a little more than one million dollars or about seven percent of the overall budget. While initial project budgeting is certainly an inexact science. We have discovered several oversights that have impacted our design work along the way. We have endeavored to incorporate every programmatic piece of the project in our design in the most cost conscious ways possible. And yet our design exceeds the original budget's area target by five thousand square feet. At an average cost of three hundred dollars per square foot. That represents an additional cost of about one point five million dollars. Well more than our present overage, according to our cost estimators. The design committee has concluded that the project's scope should remain unchanged. Any further cuts to the design needed to bring the cost estimate back to the budget will, in the minds of the committee members. Detrimentally impact the scope and quality of the project. We do plan to protect your interests on bid day by identifying a number of ad alternates on the drawings. These are à la carte items such as a new entry canopy, a bus canopy. An auxiliary sports field and supplemental landscaping. That will lower the base bid cost and can be included in the project if pricing is favorable. So our cost estimators are well known for being conservative. It is their job to protect all of us from sticker shock on bid day. While their estimate of the project is high, contractors with whom we are familiar. Claim that they will be hungry for work next year. And that their pricing will be far more competitive than this estimate suggests. We are further told by our estimators themselves. And contractors with whom we speak often. That the construction market is expected to remain soft for a while. But that it will surely surge upward when economic activity rebounds. And for that reason, they encourage us to bid the work on schedule if at all possible. So. I will stop the screen share and invite you all to ask any questions that you might have.
Are there questions from the board?
Question, Mr. Thacker. Can you tell me what role? I saw a slide about sustainability and the environment and and what considerations have you made during the design? To keep the environmental issues in mind. The reason I bring this up is because I think I was at, maybe it was a. City council meeting for Charlottesville and. Municipalities and counties can have tremendous impact on the environment. In the way they build their buildings and the considerations. And I know Kate, we had talked about getting a committee to ask these very questions, but since we have you here and I saw that slide. Can you elaborate on the sustainability you've considered?
Yeah, I think that slide that you saw was from environmental graphics packages that we have done in the past at other schools. Where we've where we've tried to emphasize sustainable aspects of our buildings of our schools. To to really allow the school to become a teaching tool for the children. But to directly answer your question, I think that sustainability was probably the very first thing that we talked about. With Ms. Crummy when she invited us to visit the school back in March. Who who reminded us that that Croze has a long history of sustainable advocacy. Among students. They had just planted trees along the stream buffer. And I would say that 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 theme has has been a prominent part of our conversations. Throughout the year. Through the full course of our design conversations with with the school community and with the community at large.
So can you point to specific things? And I'm sorry that I'm not well versed in this, but specific things that have happened in the building or that are being done. I don't know.
No, that's great. We love answering questions like this. One of the things I would say that we're doing that that just makes a lot of good common sense from an architectural perspective is that we're. Building as compact of an addition as we possibly can. You know, three stories seems unconventional for an elementary school. But we're taking advantage of the hillside to tuck a third story underneath the first two. That's really minimizing impact on a beautiful campus. It's it's saving heating and cooling costs with a compact building footprint. We are orienting the classrooms, every classroom in the in the school that's new will face south. So it will be able to harvest daylight for naturally lighting those rooms. And then, of course, the geothermal system is something that we're really excited about. We have. Implemented them in other school divisions across the state. We're excited to bring that to Albemarle County. It makes so much sense to to use the ground. For your heating and cooling source year round rather than oil or electricity.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
And.
Sorry, let me say that we are making sure that the roof is solar ready, even though solar PV isn't part of the the project's scope. But that's something that we've done successfully through a solar power purchase agreement for six of our other schools, so it will certainly be able to accommodate solar, but it's not part of the current scope.
I was gonna ask that, Lindsay, because on the graph, the mockup you had. I saw that flat roof space. Looks good.
That's our goal.
Ken, I just wanted to echo what was said about the the geothermal. I I guess I had not heard about that going in before, and I applaud the implementation of that. I know several places in the county, not not in public buildings, but in private homes where that's being used. The efficiency and and. Benefits to the owners, in this case us, in terms of costs and and all for ongoing, is I think just. So valuable and I think great insight was shown with including that.
We're we're really excited about it. It's it's free energy. There's virtually, there are very few moving parts in the system. It's absolutely quiet, which is a nice thing to have on a school campus. So and and the the payback period is. Right now modeling at three to four years, which is pretty astounding. So that that means that the energy savings you gain after. Three or four years will will pay for the system, and after that, they're going in your pocket.
Are there other questions from any other board members?
Gosh, I hate to ask this. I know we have a doozy of a meeting, but can you just clarify so so I'm sure. So it's right now. Seven anticipated to be seven percent over budget. But we think that next year, given the current economic situation, that it's going to be more competitive, so we think it might not actually be that much over budget. Is that the takeaway?
That's exactly right. So it's the estimate that is over the budget by about seven percent right now. We're continuing to look for ways to do things more cost effectively, and we're we're just bullish about. A very competitive construction contracting market. So if you were to go out to bid on time next winter, this winter. January, February timeframe, that could be an ideal time to hit the construction market.
Ms. Snotty, do you have any other? Or Ms. Carlson, you have another question?
No, I was gonna say I don't have anymore.
Ms. Snotty, do you have any other input? Thank thank you, Mr. Thacker, for your presentation, but. You did mention the supervisors' meeting. And so make sure that the board members are. What happens in that meeting, I think, would be deciding how we proceed with this project. Right?
I will defer to Roslin on that, but I believe just the discussion of capital projects in general and which ones will move forward. Will be important.
Okay, Ms. Schmidt?
Yeah, so I'll just, Roslin Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer. That agenda for that work session is still under development. It will be very preliminary affordability conversation, so I think the agenda will not be structured to talk about specific projects. But I think as a part of the discussions, there certainly would be will be an opportunity to to discuss it.
Okay. All right, and this will come back to us at the next meeting or two, right?
Yes, it'll be on your consent agenda at your next meeting for action.
Okay. Are there any other questions from any other board members on this item? Okay, if not, moving forward, our next item. Our return to school decision for the second nine weeks. And Dr. Haas is going to lead this presentation off. Dr. Haas?
Thank you very much, Mr. Page, and thank you very much to the school board. Good evening again, everyone. I'd like to begin by thanking everyone who is here tonight. Our school board members, our staff, principals, teachers, students, parents, community members. I think we've got about a thousand people. Watching the live stream right now. I would also like to thank all of you who shared your thinking with the school board and me during public comment. I know that it isn't always easy to do to to get out and speak in public like that, and I commend you and I thank you for it. Your comments are very valuable. I would also like to thank the thousands of members of our school community. Who took the time to share their personal stories and views these past several months. They all have been helpful to me as I have considered the safest course of action for our students, employees, and families. I want to thank our employees in our support departments. Our student nutrition staff who are making and serving lunch and breakfast and serving it remotely to thousands of our students daily. Our bus drivers who are delivering meals to families on their bus routes and transporting students. To and from school who need to who who need to be in our schools. And our school custodians, maintenance staff, nurses, administrators. And office associates who are putting themselves literally on the front line of keeping our schools safe. And absolutely, I am grateful to and amazed by our teachers and technology staff. Through your hard work, your empathy, your creativity and. Herculean hard work, you are making the best of a very tough situation and making virtual learning work as best it can. I'm inspired and amazed by what our teachers are doing, and I worry about them every day with the pressure they are they are feeling to get it right. And there are a lot of things going right. Thanks to our employees, and I can't thank you all enough. I see you. I thank you. As I get into the body of my comments, I want to say that my primary hope is that. All we that we all get all of the questions answered to the best of our ability in this process. I hope everyone understands that if the board decides to move up a stage tonight. We built our timeline so that we have a full month to continue to iron out details for each employee and student. But I want to be sure we can address all the questions we can. If you have a question after tonight, I encourage you to start with your school's principal. If the principal doesn't have an answer, please contact me. And I will get you to the person who can answer your question and make sure the principal has the correct information moving forward. I want to continue to ask all of our stakeholders to use our Return to Learn webpage. It's updated very frequently. Answers to many questions I continue to hear are found there. Please let me express my appreciation to the Virginia Department of Education and the Health Department, especially our local health officials. Including, of course, Ryan McKay, who's here in Charlottesville, who have done such a superb job of providing up to date and comprehensive guidance. On the health of our community and the protective measures needed to keep our employees, students, and families safe. I firmly believe these recommendations have contributed to the response by the teachers who are actually in our schools and using them. On our recent online survey that upwards of seventy percent agree that the health and safety protocols in their workplace have kept them safe. That is more than ten times the percentage of teachers who disagree. Since our schools were closed in March, we have invested more than one point five million dollars to keep our employees and students and families safe. Investments that are crucial to meeting one of the Center for Disease Disease Control and Prevention's core indicators for the lowest risk of COVID nineteen transmission. One of the most important of these indicators, effective mitigation strategies, results from our school board's support. Of such measures as mandating the consistent use of face masks in our schools. And it is the result of the outstanding preventive measures in our schools put in place by our support service employees. Because of these efforts, my weekly visits to schools. Have demonstrated that we are prepared to socially distance students and staff. We're doing it now, and we're prepared to continue to do it. Even with increased numbers. To follow hand hygiene and respiratory adequate etiquette. And to regularly clean and disinfect all classrooms and schools and to maintain healthy air circulation. These steps have helped keep to a minimum the number of our employees who have tested positive for COVID nineteen. The quick and responsible action by our employees and our health department. When an employee has tested positive proves that high quality and reliable contact tracing not only is possible in our division. But it is in place and it is working. It is important to also keep our focus on the CDC's other two core indicators. The percent positivity of COVID nineteen tests is on the edge between indicating a low or moderate risk of transmission. The number of new cases per one hundred thousand people is in a higher risk category. But research tells us this number is being significantly influenced by what is happening at U V A in terms of the numbers. The the U V A numbers are in Almual County data, but it is not in our schools. Where there are students in schools in our region. Experiences largely have been safe. Nearly twenty three thousand students are in schools in our region, Virginia Department of Education's Region Five. With twenty school divisions in proximity and adjacent to us with only minimal instances of virus. with twenty school divisions in proximity and adjacent to us with only minimal instances of virus transmission. We can be compared to all of these school divisions on an equal basis because although we all have schools in rural, suburban and urban settings, when you enter the school, our classrooms are about the same size. In our current plans, for example, our class sizes are projecting from five to eleven students for an average of about ten across the county. Here in our school division, more than thirteen thousand students are not in school. For these families, fewer than four in ten parents say their child stays focused on instruction. Fewer than one in four students, according to their parents, is able to maintain contacts with other students. Two out of three parents say they would send their child to school if they had that option, they had that choice. By nearly a two to one margin, parents say their child has been less successful this year compared to in-person instruction in prior years. Our teachers say also by a nearly two to one margin that they know their students less well than they have known them in prior years. These results confirm what we already know. Virtual instruction is, is less than perfect. It is less effective than in-person learning. And I believe it calls upon us to thoughtfully and safely expand in-person learning. All numbers have context and I want to share with you what I think about when I read these numbers and think about the students they represent. In Alamo, we have an equity mission statement and here it is. "We will end the predictive value of race, class, gender and special capacities on student success by working together with families and communities to ensure each individual student's success." The current instructional environment in our schools and in schools across our nation are driving ever wider the gap between the haves, the have less and the have nots. According to Dr. Bob Pianta, Dean of the Curry School of Education and Human Development at University of Virginia, COVID has already led and will continue to lead to a staggering increase in academic inequality. The learning gaps were already increasing, but time in a classroom matters. Overall, he expects we will see a thirty percent loss in reading and math scores in our current, uh, virtual environment. However, for vulnerable populations, low-income minorities, English language learners and special education, we expect to see a fifty percent decrease in reading scores. And this is a quote from Dr. Pianta, "A whopping seventy percent decrease in math scores." "We will have very, very difficult time recovering, if it is even possible, without enormous and sustained effort." "COVID and the impact on education places generations of kids at risk." And I will just say, as Dr. Kastner, the superintendent who hired me to work in Alamo County Public Schools, once told me that we often do not hear the voice of our most vulnerable and marginalized families. I have to say, we did not hear them tonight. As an earlier speaker pointed out, they are drowned out when we make a decision like the one we are faced with tonight. That is why we have the gaps in equity that we have. Research tells us that interventions as early as possible in the life of a child can lead to improvements in a child's survival, her health, growth and cognitive and social development. This is a conclusion widely shared by educational researchers and practitioners, including our own State Department of Education, which has advised school divisions around the state that in-person instruction should be a priority for our youngest learners. The health experts who advised this board recently said, and this is Dr. Denise Bonds uh, from Thomas Jefferson Health District, soon to be Blue Ridge Health District, "Efforts to safely increase the number of students returning for in-person instruction and recommends focusing on younger students, smaller class or pod sizes with students adequately spaced." "Ours is a school division that consistently has valued expanding the range of choices available to students as the most effective pathway to achieving our one strategic goal for all. For each graduate to actively have mastered the skills to succeed as twenty-first century learners, workers and citizens. I am recommending to the board that we expand the concept of choice to more parents and students. By increasing the number of students we invite into our schools beginning on November eighth. Choice to attend school in person should be extended to the parents of all children in pre-kindergarten programs and grades kindergarten through third grade. To all special education students in, in A base and C base programs, to additional English language learners, to students without internet access and students who would most benefit from in-person instruction. They are our customers. They deserve choice. Based on consultation with our building principals, in-person instruction for our pre-K students and those in grades kindergarten through third grade would be two days per week, ensuring that we can continue to keep our learning environment safe and adapt to numbers of students and staff as they grow over time. It could increase the entire number of students in our schools to about twenty-five hundred students each of the two days of a week for a total of five thousand students." While actual numbers will be determined by how many parents choose the two-day-per-week in-person instruction option, we expect average class sizes to be about ten students or less. On July thirtieth, we told our community that progression from stage two to stage three of our return to school plan would be based upon six factors, and you'll see those later in the presentation. Executive orders and local ordinances that impact the ability to provide successful classroom learning, there are none preventing moving to stage three. Guidance offered by the CDC and state and local health authorities, there is none that would prevent a move to stage three. Current COVID nineteen conditions in the region within our schools, including but not limited to community transmission, testing positivity rates and other health, public health data. No conditions exist to prevent an expansion into stage three. Status of COVID nineteen testing and tracking abilities, the status of these capabilities in Alamo County schools and in our community allows a move to stage three according to our health department. Our ability to staff and support the implementation of our instructional and health plans based on our online survey and the reports from our principals who regularly talk with teachers and classified staff, I am absolutely confident we can safely move to stage three. And feedback from stakeholders and school communities, which supports a modest expansion to stage three. I want to quote two of the authorities we reference in our decision-making process. The CDC has said that schools are an important part of the infrastructure of communities as they provide safe supportive learning environments for students, employ teachers and other staff and enable parents, guardians and caregivers to work. They also help, the CDC says, "to mitigate health disparities by providing critical services including social, physical, behavioral and mental health." If we have to pu, I have to pause here and say that I understand fear. We should all have a healthy respect and fear of COVID nineteen. Obviously, it is an infectious disease with dire consequences. I completely understand being afraid of the virus. Fear and respect and a desire to protect our children and employees is what keep and will keep us vigilant and safe. So far, vigilance and adherence to our board-required mitigation strategies have prevented outbreaks in our schools. And I'm confident that this will continue into stage three. I hope everyone understands however, that we will monitor daily any cases reported. We are working on a webpage to report by school the five cases we have encountered since March, not breakouts, but cases that came in the school from other places and add information to the report so that everyone can check and see what is happening in each school building. I also wanted to assure all of our students, staff and families that I will strictly follow advice from the Health Department and will take every measure necessary to prevent outbreaks and spread, including those we have not adopted yet as new methods are coming about and becoming more feasible and often more affordable daily. And if it is necessary, I will move us back to stage two. We certainly closed schools for inclement weather with short notice. We can go back to stage two with short notice. The only difference here is that the virtual learning environment our teachers have mastered will continue. And our plan is for students to retain the teacher they are assigned to in stage three and continue to have that teacher for the remainder of the year. I know it, it will be a disruption in many cases. I don't, uh, not in all cases, and I don't think in the majority of cases. Students may need to change teachers. We've been in school for one month. They will have the remaining, um, eight months of school af, at the, after the beginning of November with the same teacher. And our, let's see, last part here, the Health District, the Health Director for the Thomas Jefferson Health District, Dr. Denise Bonds advises us that "The value of in-person education for pre-K to third grade is critical to this age group's overall development and growth." Dr. Bonds assures us that providing the opportunity for students to return at this time is important and the current public health conditions in the community support a decision that enables parents and guardians to send their children to school for in-person instruction. Based on the current public health risk conditions and our plan to minimize risk within school settings, the Thomas Jefferson Health District, Dr. Bond says, "Supports a decision for us to implement a hybrid teaching model for pre-K students and for students in grades kindergarten through third grade." Experience has shown that this board's measured approach on July thirtieth was the right step and it tells us now that this is the right time to take another measured step forward and to give parents of our youngest students the right to choose whether they may attend school in person. At this time, I'll turn things over to Dr. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Dr. Haas. And actually, we're going to, uh, let Dr. Collins, uh, take, uh, Ms. Collins take over right now.
Thank you. I'm Debbie Collins, Deputy Superintendent. I'd like to share some information this evening regarding stage three and the numbers associated with it. As part of this presentation, we will be viewing the voice, voiceover slide deck that was shared last week with staff and families. I know that many of you have already viewed the slide deck, so pardon the repetition. There seems to be some confusion over this past twenty-four hours about details surrounding stage three. So it seemed like a good opportunity to share this information again.
At its meeting on October eighth, the Alamo County School Board will make a decision whether the school division should progress to a new stage of the return to school plan. This presentation will provide you with the most up-to-date information available about stage three so that you can provide feedback on the material the school board will consider when deciding to remain in stage two or move to stage three. As we consider the next steps of our staged approach in our return to school plan, it's important to remember that stages present a sequenced approach to return to school from fully virtual instruction to fully in-person instruction. Public health data will guide the decisions that the school board will make regarding the return to school plan. And ACPS will need to be fluid in order to respond to the needs of the community and public health guidance. Currently, ACPS is in stage two of our return to school plan. This means we have virtual learning for most of our students and limited in-person access for a limited number of our students. We will remain in this stage until at least November the sixth, which is the end of the first quarter this school year. In July, the school board voted to begin the school year in stage two. On October eighth, the halfway point of the grading period, the school board will vote on whether or not we should advance to stage three for the second marking period. Any shift to a higher stage of return would take place at the start of a new marking period, but the school division could move to a more restrictive stage of returning at any time if public health conditions warrant such action. The following slides will provide an overview of stage three. In stage three, virtual learning will continue for students in grades four through twelve and expanded access to optional in-person learning would be offered to students who are English language learners, special education students and students who have exhibited a lack of engagement in the virtual experience. A hybrid learning option would be available to students in grades pre-K through three with all families having the option of staying completely virtual. Finally, secondary students may be eligible to participate in athletics and extracurricular activities upon approval of the school division. In-person access is different from face-to-face instruction. Students participating in in-person access complete all their work virtually, but do so at one of our school buildings in a small pod that has a learning coach in the room for support. In-person access is always optional for eligible families. In stage three, eligibility would expand to include all special education A base and C base program students, English learners in grades four through twelve with a WEDA level of one through four and students who have shown a lack of engagement and virtual experience during stage two. Hybrid learning is a combination of virtual learning and face-to-face instruction with a child's classroom teacher. All students in grade pre-K through three are eligible for the hybrid option, but no student will be required to attend school in person. In other words, all students can remain one hundred percent virtual if they choose to do so. We know that our youngest learners benefit from face-to-face learning and social interactions when they are in school. They are more vulnerable to a summer in COVID slide when they lack necessary foundational learning experiences needed for successful learning as they advance in grades. For instance, students who do not learn to read by grade two are more likely to fail to graduate than their reading peers. The hybrid learning model for students in pre-K through third grade would mean face-to-face learning at school for two days each week with asynchronous at-home learning three days each week. Elementary groups will be generally formed by utilizing virtual AM and PM synchronous groups. Groups will be adjusted to balance out group sizes. If families have children in two different groups in stage two, they may elect to change so all family members are in the same group in stage three. You may recall that the plan that was originally presented to the school board in July had a four-day face-to-face schedule for students in grades pre-K through three. Since that time, elementary principals have had a chance to review the original recommendation of four days a week. Due to many logistical challenges that four days a week puts on elementary schools, the principals recommended a shift to a two-day-week hybrid model for stage three. There are multiple benefits for your child in this model that include a smaller number of students in the building, which makes for easier social distancing protocols, eliminating the need for split classrooms to accommodate social distancing, meaning your child will be with his or her assigned classroom teachers at all times for face-to-face instruction, all students following the same bell schedule and a continuation of synchronous specials during at-home learning days. Learning at school in the hybrid model will consist of students in their classroom with their teacher for face-to-face instruction with about half of their classmates, access to outdoors, playground and the gym, instruction in the full core curriculum, a focus on social and emotional learning, including working with others and school counseling services, and students receiving face-to-face intervention services when appropriate. When learning at home, students will learn virtually through asynchronous activities that are supported by school teaching assistants, attend synchronous specials classes and receive interventions via Zoom as appropriate. In addition to some elementary school students returning to school for face-to-face instruction, athletics and extracurricular activities for secondary students would be eligible to resume in stage three. Detailed information about the ACPS Athletics and Activities reopening plan can be found on our return to school webpage. Creating a safe environment for all of our students and staff is the top priority as we move through the stages of returning to school. Specific details about our mitigation strategies to prevent the spread of COVID nineteen can be found on our return to school website and include a universal face covering policy, enhanced cleaning and disinfecting, health screenings for everyone entering a school building, enhanced ventilation in our classrooms, appropriate physical distancing practices and a transportation health plan. We have created a short video. We have created a short video to highlight what these mitigation strategies will look like in our buildings.
I'd like to thank the communication team for that excellent presentation. You can find that slide deck on our website. As a reminder and to reiterate what you've already heard, Stage Three is a progressive approach to bring more students into our buildings. Stage Three builds on Stage Two. Stage Two has allowed us to have approximately 2% of our students coming to school. In addition to approximately 70 special education students, we have about 100 English-language learners and 100 students without internet connectivity attending four days a week. While most of our students will remain learning virtually with the same schedule they have now, I want to highlight the additional students we would be inviting into our school buildings. Our largest group would be our students in pre-K through third grade. If all of our students were to choose hybrid, as Dr. Haas told you earlier, we would invite in approximately 4,000 students. That would mean approximately 2,000 pre-K through third grade students would attend each day in the every-other-day model. For our fourth through 12th graders, we would invite in 250 additional special education students and approximately 315 English-language learners. Additionally, we will identify, invite, and students who are not thriving in our current virtual environment. We anticipate this would be no more than 5% of our students, which would be about 470 students. Finally, in Stage Three, we would allow for athletic and extracurricular activities to begin in our secondary school through an established process. At this time, Ms. Schmidt will provide more details on these numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. My name is Rosalyn Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer. So based on those student populations that Ms. Collins mentioned, I wanted to briefly highlight how many students we will anticipate having in our buildings on a typical day during Stage Three. Since we know families will elect to remain virtual, we anticipate only having about 2,500 students in our building per day, which is only about 20% of our total enrollment. If we zoom in on the classroom level, our current K3, pre-K to third-grade classes are between 10 and 24 students. So when brought in on an alternating schedule, that means that there will only be between five and 12 students in a classroom at a time. Physical distancing will be a key health mitigation strategy, so these small class sizes will help us implement that strategy effectively. That concludes our overview of the details of Stage Three. So next, Dr. McLaughlin will review the factors that were considered in the recommendation to progress to this stage.
Thanks, Ms. Schmidt, and good evening, board members. Patrick McLaughlin, Chief of Strategic Planning for the School Division. As you recall from our return-to-school plan, the School Division has identified six factors that should be considered as we make a decision to move from one stage to the next. Those factors are applicable executive orders and local ordinances that may impact the ability to provide successful classroom learning, guidance offered by the CDC and state and local health authorities, current COVID conditions in the Albemarle County region and within Albemarle County public schools, including but not limited to community transmission, testing positivity rates, and other public health data, status of COVID-19 testing and tracking capabilities in the Albemarle County region, the ability of Albemarle County public schools, including staffing and resources, to implement the Division's instruction on health plans, and feedback and input from stakeholders and school communities. Tonight, we'll provide updates on the current state of these factors. The first factor is applicable executive orders and local ordinances that may impact the ability to provide successful classroom learning. Currently, the Commonwealth of Virginia is in Phase Three of its reopening plan. Separate guidance in regard to reopening has been provided by the Virginia Department of Education, and our recommendation to move to Albemarle Stage Three would fall within what the DOE defines as Phase Two, allowing pre-K through three students and select other groups to attend school in person. Finally, Albemarle County has extended ordinance 20-A13 through November 18th. This ordinance establishes strong mitigation strategies for the entire community, including specific limits on occupancy of food establishments as well as limits on social gatherings. None of the current orders and ordinances would prevent the board from moving to Stage Three. And in fact, Albemarle's local ordinance provides mitigation strategies above and beyond what the Commonwealth has established that will work to further limit community transmission and lower the level of risks for students and staff in schools. We also look to guidance from national, state, and local health authorities as we consider moving to Stage Three. That guidance comes from the Centers for Disease Control, the Virginia Department of Health, and our local Blue Ridge Health District. The VDH has created the following graphic that combines information from the health agencies with the phased reopening approach developed by the Virginia Department of Education. It crosswalks the five categories of risk of community transmission from the CDC with the Department of Education phased guidance. As you can see on this graphic, schools can reopen in DOE Phase Three at the lowest and lower levels of risk, can open in DOE Phase Two at moderate or high risk, and DOE Phase One when at the highest level of risk of community transmission. As a reminder, our recommendation for ACPS Stage Three aligns with the Department of Education Phase Two guidelines. The next two factors that we need to consider when moving stages are the status of COVID-19 testing and tracking capabilities in the Albemarle County region and current COVID-19 conditions in the Albemarle County region and within Albemarle County public schools, including but not limited to community transmission, testing positivity rates, and other public health data. At this time, I would like to turn things over to Ryan McKay from the Blue Ridge Health District to provide updates on these areas. Ryan?
Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin, and thank you to the board and those listening for the opportunity to provide some updates. A couple of things that are critical in terms of our ability to contain and mitigate risk within the community, but certainly within school systems, includes some data that we're going to hear about in a second, but also capabilities regarding testing and our ability to track those who are positive and those that need to be quarantined. As compared to where we were in July, both in Virginia locally and across the country, testing capacity has increased. There continues to be widespread access to testing that's been established over the last couple of months. Supply chains have been firmed up, and even though UVA has been spending a tremendous amount of resources to provide for testing in their students, they continue to provide access to testing through community events. We are also able to provide community testing through our own events, and we have not yet heard of any slowdown or issues with accessing testing throughout the community and providers. Turnaround times for tests from labs continue to run about less than 48 hours from the receipt of that specimen, which is really important and critical for us to be able to contact those who are positive. At this point, we have been able to contact individuals who test positive within 24 hours, roughly 96% of the time, and then close contacts who need to quarantine around 95% of the time. There are a few metrics that we're going to look at here in a second. One relates to pandemic metrics that we have been sharing with localities for a number of weeks now, and then some of the data that's much more localized that helps inform decision-making. And I think that's an important piece of this conversation, is that the data shows spikes, it shows valleys, it shows changes in trends, but there's a lot of context behind that. And these next few slides will explain a little bit about that context. This comes from the VDH's pandemic metrics dashboard. This part isn't actually accessible publicly because they want people to refer to some of the more metrics that are aligned with the CDC, but this is what we've been sharing for the last several weeks. On the left-hand side, you can see burden, meaning how much is occurring or how much is happening in the community at any given point. At this point, there are 11 people per day, per 100,000 contracting COVID, based on the statistics. We also have a positivity rate that's a rolling seven-day average of 5.3%. As you can see, even though those ends of the bar graphs or the line graphs are trending downwards, we're indicating that we've seen an increase for both over the last few weeks. This just gives you a little bit of a snapshot of what we've been seeing over the course of the last month or so. So on September 14th, we were at 6.2 per 100,000, and since then, we've gone up to 11.0 per 100,000 as of October 7th. It is an increasing trend. We certainly take a look at this as part of what's the discussion around that. And as we move forward, we'll get some understanding of what are some of the events that are occurring that would increase those numbers. Positivity rate is something that we look at. Again, it also, it has some context with it. So this is really just the percentage of individuals who are testing positive over a seven-day period of time, all of the people that have received a test. So it doesn't necessarily translate to what the community spread is like, but it gives us a better sense and understanding of what is happening in the community, where testing is occurring, what other events may be happening that's informing this data. Again, we just ticked over the 5% threshold here recently at 5.3%, but this is something that varies from one week to the next, depending on what's occurring in the community. It's important to understand where Charlottesville City is. We're very interconnected. We'll also look at some data referring to the university, but as an understanding of where we are with Charlottesville, you can see that there's been increases in the number of cases per 100,000 over the seven-day average, 39.5 in September, and then 41.6 in October. And again, some of these data points are going to coincide with events that have occurred throughout the community, particularly the return of students, both on grounds and off grounds. Positivity rate, so what may seem counterintuitive in terms of the number of cases that we are seeing on a daily basis, the positivity rate has actually gone down over the last month. This is really attributable to the widespread testing that UVA has done on grounds and then provided access to for students who live off grounds. It also includes all of the testing that's been done throughout the community over that time. If we were to see large amounts of testing occurring at this rate, but a positivity rate closer to 10, that would be much more concerning. Positivity rates that are under 5% allow us to contain potential spread of disease by quickly isolating the individuals who test positive and then quickly notifying those that need to quarantine, the close contacts who may have been exposed to COVID-19. This allows us to prevent further spread from occurring, both in an educational setting but also in the community. To provide a little bit of context, there are some events that occurred related to testing, and then when students returned to grounds or also off grounds between August and September, it's going to impact the overall data. On the left, you can see that students began reporting cases on August 17th on their COVID tracker. On September 6th, UVA students moved into on-ground housing. At this time, there were also, the vast majority of students who live off grounds had already moved into their housing situations within the city, potentially some in the county. And we begin to see some of the increases, both in our case counts per 100,000, but also with some positivity rates. And then on September 18th, UVA began doing point prevalence testing in their dorms, which means once they've identified a couple of cases through the traditional PCR testing, which is the nasal swab testing, or through some wastewater testing indicating higher viral loads of the virus in the wastewater, they test every single person in that particular dorm. It's a practice that's used in other congregate settings, and the idea is that we are going to identify those who need to be isolated because they're positive and quickly quarantine those who are considered close contacts. These increases in the testing also correlate to some of the increases that we saw in the earlier slides in terms of increases in case incidence rate, but also some of the positivity. On the right-hand side, you can see some data here that's pulled from our data portal on our website, but also from the COVID tracker, indicating total number of cases in Charlottesville and Albemarle over that time, and then the number of cases that UVA was reporting through their student health and the data systems that they use to track their own cases. Obviously, there's a greater proportion of those testing positive within the UVA community than in the Albemarle community at large. I think another point of context here is that, to this point, we have not really been seeing community transmission that's also tied to student transmission. University has done a tremendous job to provide on-ground housing for those that need to isolate and quarantine, and have worked really hard to communicate with the entire student body and their faculty on the appropriate measures to take to limit spread for those who test positive. These are part of core indicators that VDH is using that also align with the CDC core indicators to help schools make decisions in terms of what the risk is. Here, you can see that the 14-day new cases per 100,000 is 172.0, which puts Albemarle County at a higher risk of transmission. And then the positivity rate here is, over that 14-day period, is 5.1%, which puts it at moderate risk for transmission. And what that means is, is that understanding that risk allows us to make different determinations about how to mitigate risk in different settings. For example, bringing pre-K through third grade back is one of the ways that we can mitigate and minimize risk within schools if we're going to return students to in-person education. The last one is the ability to, of the school, to implement five key mitigation strategies, which you've heard a lot about previously. One of the things that's really connected to public health is the ability to do the contact tracing. Over the course of the last few months, we've worked closely with the county schools to really firm up that process, to establish communication pathways, and identify lessons learned from previous communication, maybe what we would consider mistakes or opportunities for learning, to address those and firm those up before students return in greater numbers.
Thanks, Ryan. The CDC has recently established quantitative levels for each school, for each of the categories of risk of transmission in schools. And as you can see, they also focus on the case incident rate and percent positivity in the local community. Based on our current numbers, our case incidence rate places us in the higher risk of transmission category, and our percent positivity rate places us in the moderate risk of transmission category. The third factor that's identified by the CDC to consider as schools reopen is perhaps the most important one, the ability of a school district to implement five key mitigation strategies, which include consistent and correct use of masks, social distancing to the largest extent possible, hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette, cleaning and disinfection, contact tracing and collaboration with local health departments. Albemarle County has put significant effort into the five key strategies that are outlined by the CDC. We recently adopted a mask policy, which requires masks for every individual in our school buildings. As alluded to earlier, our Stage Three recommendation would have very small class sizes on any given day in our schools. In addition, students in our elementary schools will remain with the same group of students throughout the day. Both of these measures allow appropriate social distancing to be achieved. The School Division has installed hand sanitation stations in each classroom and throughout our buildings to promote good hand hygiene. Detailed protocols for cleaning have been implemented, including investing in equipment such as misters and HEPA filters and outfitting each classroom with disinfecting wipes. And finally, we have a strong relationship with the Health District to assist with contact tracing in the event of a positive case in our schools. So when schools implement all of these practices consistently and correctly, it lowers the overall risk of transmission in our schools, even when other factors are elevated. ACPS currently has all five mitigation strategies in place, and we feel that we are implementing all of them correctly and consistently. As you will see later in the presentation, this is evidenced by strong agreement from our staff who are currently working in our schools, that the mitigation strategies we have in place are adequate for keeping them safe. When this is coupled with the disproportional impact the University of Virginia has in Albemarle County's numbers, as Ryan has addressed, we feel strongly that we can safely invite students back to our schools. Up next, I was going to read a statement by Dr. Denise Bonds, who is the Health Director of the Blue Ridge Health District, but I understand that Dr. Bonds was actually able to join us tonight. And so at this point, I'd like to welcome Dr. Bonds if she would like to go over the details of her statement or provide any other information to us. Dr. Bonds, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. So thank you so much for having us here. You heard a lot of data and information from Ryan McKay, and I won't go through that again, and I'm not going to read the statement that's on the board there for you. But I will say that we've been very impressed with the preparations that Albemarle County schools have made to bring their students back into class. I do think that it is really critical, particularly for our younger-age kids, that they get back in a classroom setting. I've heard from many, many parents the difficulty that kids this age are having with virtual learning. I think that when we look at the risk-benefit ratio, having these kids back in the class in the fashion that has been designed by Albemarle County School and really tested out by some of our neighboring school districts makes it an activity that the benefits fall on the side of having the kids return back. So I'm excited to see the plan that's put forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I know Ryan has, would be happy to answer questions as well about the COVID status in the district or about our ability to respond overall.
Thank you, Dr. Bonds, and we will likely take advantage of that in just a minute when we pause for some questions from our board members. Again, thank you for being here. Finally, we've had some questions over the past few days about about whether the timing of our return close to the winter holiday should be adjusted. And I'd invite Ryan back to give the board some insight into that area.
These questions come up a few times, and I think our understanding of what's happening in the community, what the risks are, both in terms of increased interaction due to the holidays, I think gives us a little bit of time to adjust. So by bringing students back on the ninth before holidays begin, that really allows the schools, the staff, teachers, nurses, to really firm up the mitigation strategies that are going to be put in place to reduce risk. Screening for symptoms, getting children to understand the benefits of wearing the masks, and just making sure that all of those pathways for mitigating risk are in place. If we really wait until after the holidays, you have to think about the timeframe that you would really want to wait. So looking at what a quarantine period looks like for potential exposure is 14 days. That really puts reopening and making those decisions into middle January, maybe even later, depending on what the school schedule is. So I think the benefits of moving in and bringing students in on November 9th is really important because it provides time to firm up those strategies. But we also understand the potential risks that come with the holidays, and we can adjust accordingly by providing additional guidance based on what we're seeing in the community in terms of the data, potential community spread, and then what that risk is for the facilities.
Thanks, Ryan. So coming back to our crosswalk document, we have metrics that span multiple categories of risk, but none that are high enough that the board would not be able to move our students to stage three of our return to school plan. That, coupled with the mitigation strategies and the information from our local health officials, gives us great confidence that we can move to stage three safely. So before we move on to the final two categories that we'll discuss tonight, I'd like to pause to see if the board has any questions for Ryan McKay or Dr. Denise Bonds.
I have a question. Let me start my video here. So for the first core metric, the total number of new cases per 100,000 people within the past 14 days. So in the past 14 days of that metric, it's gone from 96.58 to 178.4 with the highest risk minimum at 200. So, and I understand what you're saying about UVA being a majority of those, although I have a lot of students in my district whose parents work at UVA, and it's a huge engine. So is it that you think that we're not going to get to that highest risk here in the next couple of weeks?
I think it's going to be hard to predict whether we will or not Charlottesville City is. But I think understanding what's driving those numbers is important. That the impact of the students being back on grounds and certainly off grounds is impacting the data and what that looks like, as opposed to community transmission beyond UVA and what's affiliated with UVA in terms of the students. It's going to be hard to predict, but at this point, what we're seeing and what we're hearing is that even though there may be cases occurring in transmission in the county, it's not happening at a rate within the community itself that gives us concern. If we were to begin to see transmission between students in the community and those things started happening at higher rates or more quickly, then obviously that would give us pause for concern. But at this point, we're just not seeing that, and we think the impact is more on the data and not so much on community spread.
Hey, Ryan. It's Dave Over. I hear you. Here's my concern. Breaking out at UVA, the students are staying pretty, pretty, pretty level, about 150 per week. But two weeks ago, the positivity rate among the staff was seven, and last week it was 21. So, and you know, I accept the fact that students are really not going to be intermingling with the with the community as much, but the staff certainly are going to. Is that a concern?
I think anytime there's a positive case, there's always the risk that it's going to spread beyond one or two people. What we've been experiencing is that between our quick turnaround times in identifying staff and then quarantining, we're not seeing a lot of transmission go beyond one or two people. There's the R not, which is the number of people infected. And we can't get down to the local level, but regionally, it's less than one per person. And so we're always concerned about the potential for larger outbreaks, for larger clusters. But as long as, I think, we're able to maintain that quick contact with individuals who test positive and then the close contacts, we're actually able to contain spread that way. And having a positivity rate at the community level at or below five really helps us do that.
But ours is, and that was the other thing I was going to ask you. You'd said, hey, look, if we're below five, we can contain it, but we're at 5.1.
If they were closer to eight, seven, eight, nine, then I would be concerned. 5.1 in three days, that could change depending on what the testing is. Again, positivity rate is sort of one aspect of the entire picture. Our ability to get testing results quickly is a big part of that. Our ability to make contact within 24 hours is another part of that picture. And we're very confident in what our team's been able to do to quickly identify, isolate, and quarantine individuals. And there's been great adherence to those recommendations that we provide, whether it's the students or whether it's to members of the community.
So how quickly, if there is an outbreak, how quickly will we identify it? If there's an outbreak in the community, there's a spike. What delay is it between the time you say, oh, God, and are we going to have time to move back from stage three?
It could vary on the situation. We feel confident that we've identified outbreaks pretty quickly. A lot of that's going to depend on the number of close contacts, the situation where the initial index case occurred, what's the spacing look like in that particular facility, whether it's a school or whether it's a workplace. I think we've been really sound in our ability to identify those outbreaks in more community settings. It's a little different in congregate settings, like a long-term care facility. But we've worked really hard to limit the number of outbreaks that have occurred. And there's a low threshold for that. You know, an outbreak is two people testing positive who have an epidemiological link. And it's a low threshold for a reason, so that we can identify those concerns quickly and adapt our procedures to make sure that we're getting people to testing, we're isolating individuals, and then quarantining those who are considered close contacts.
Thank you.
So if there's no more questions, I'll move on to our final two factors that we're considering. And those are feedback and input from stakeholders and school communities, and the ability of Almaro County Public Schools, including staffing and resources, to implement the division's instructional and health plans. Recently, Dr. Haas reached out to all of the school divisions in Region Five to gather information about their current state of opening and to get feedback about how things were going for them. This chart shows how the 20 districts in our region compared to our plans to move to stage three. At the start of the school year, five other districts opened up for special groups only, as Almaro County did. All of those districts are currently considering their reopening plans with multiple districts looking at plans that are similar to what ACPS has proposed in stage three. The remaining districts have all opened with larger numbers of students when compared to Almaro. Of the districts that are currently open, those schools are welcoming nearly 22,500 students to their buildings each day. One of the indicators that's important to consider as schools reopen are any outbreaks that take place in the school setting. An outbreak is defined as two or more lab-confirmed cases that were contracted within the school environment. As you can see, there have been only three outbreaks in our region since the start of the school year. When that data is expanded out to the entire state of Virginia, the outbreak total is 27. While there have been cases of individuals with COVID in these districts and individuals who have needed to quarantine because of those cases, the low number of outbreaks in school settings is an indicator that transmission of COVID in schools that have reopened is a rare occurrence. The School Health Advisory Board in Almaro County was created for the purpose of advising the school board on matters related to health policies and protocols. Each school board member appoints a member to the, to the Health Advisory Board, and there is also representation from the Almaro Medical Board, the Thomas Jefferson Health Department, and school division employees, as well as several superintendent appointees. The board is facilitated by Eileen Gomez and currently has 16 members, including local pediatric and adult physicians, clinical social worker, a nursing supervisor, as well as other health professionals, parents, and school division employees. Recently, the board shared with us their feedback on stage three and expressed in a statement that they support efforts to safely increase the number of students returning for in-person instruction and recommends focusing on younger students. They support smaller classes or pod sizes with students adequately spaced and a slow and cautious transition to stage three and the mitigation strategies that are already in place for stage two. We've also been doing some extensive surveying of our employees, parents, and high school students. We asked our employees who are currently working in our buildings, either full or part-time, if they felt that the health and safety protocols in place were adequate for keeping them safe. Over 70% of both classified and licensed staff members responded that they agreed or strongly agreed that the protocols were keeping them safe. Less than 10% of these staff members disagreed with this statement. And while we're keeping safety as a primary focus of our decision-making process, we also surveyed our community on the learning experiences of our students and staff to date. We know that our online learning experience for students in the fall is significantly improved from last spring. Our teachers and staff members have been working incredibly hard, and there's a lot that's going right with our online learning. There are, however, two areas from the survey that were particularly concerning to us and reinforced our thinking that a move to stage three is warranted. In our mission statement, we pride ourselves on the relationships that we build with our students. In fact, a few years ago, we revised the mission statement so that relationships became before relevance and rigor. When we asked our teachers how well they know their students compared to last year, these were the results that we saw. 47.1% answered less well, 29.6% answered about the same, and 23.2% answered better. When a weighted score falls below 3.0, this indicates a negatively skewed response. The weighted score for this item was a 2.7. Additionally, we asked our parents how well they felt their children were doing academically this year compared to last. We saw similar results here as well, with 43.6 saying they were less successful, 34.6% saying about the same, and 21.8% saying they were more successful. This item also had a weighted score of 2.7, which skews to the negative. We did see some clear differences in the responses from our teachers when compared to the responses from our parents. When asked what they felt the best learning environment would be as we entered the second marking period, we saw that approximately two-thirds of our teachers answered virtual would be best, while nearly two-thirds of our parents responded that hybrid would be best. We saw similar results when we broke these numbers out for pre-K to three responses. We asked a similar question of our high school students, and over 70% of the respondents indicated that they think a hybrid option would be best when they have the option to return to school. In addition, we asked our parents what choice they would make for their child when face-to-face learning became an option for them. We see that roughly two-thirds of our parents would choose face-to-face, and one-third would choose virtual. Finally, we felt it was important for the board to hear directly from our principals, and tonight, we're grateful to have several of them with us. I'd like to first introduce Seth Kennard, Principal of Baker Butler Elementary School.
Good evening. Thank you, Patrick, and thank you, members of the school board. My name is Seth Kennard, the principal at Baker Butler Elementary School. And I'm here today to add some brief perspective on behalf of the elementary school principals regarding the possibility of progressing to stage three. I want to begin, like Matt did and many of our speakers did, by thanking our teachers, our school staff, our parents and our community members for their wavering support in their tireless work over the first half of this instructional quarter. The principals know that this has not been easy, and we deeply appreciate everyone's support. Pending your decision on Dr. Haas's recommendation, elementary school principals will be prepared to welcome back our preschool through third-grade students next quarter while implementing the safety protocols outlined by the county. If this progression is adopted, we would immediately begin the operational and instructional preparation necessary to make this transition as smooth as possible for our communities. We remain committed to providing a robust virtual learning experience for our students in grade four and five in stage three, and for those students who opt to remain virtual under that stage. If we remain in stage two, we'll continue to refine our work with that as well. While the decision to progress to next stage does lie with the board, we do recognize the value in being able to support our youngest learners in person as we work to develop our classroom routines, build their social skills, and focus on literacy development face-to-face. We also recognize additional burden that this will have on our families by having two days in person. But we do feel this model, and the model that we changed, the principal's putting forward for today, will allow us to apply those county guidelines and welcome back students and ensuring that they receive instruction from a highly qualified teacher. The principal's staying ready to serve our students regardless of the vote this evening. And again, we want to thank our community for their support, and we also want to thank you all. We know this is not an easy decision, and we appreciate your thought and work that's gone into that. Thank you.
Thanks, Seth. We also have Beth Costa from Henley Middle School. Dr. Costa?
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to join you this evening to share my perspective on Dr. Haas's recommendation to progress to stage three for the second nine weeks. I am Beth Costa, and I serve as the principal of Henley Middle School. To begin, I'd like to acknowledge the difficulty of this time. Many stakeholders have very different ideas of what the next best thing is to do. All of that comes from a place of good intent, from wanting to keep our children, teachers, staff, and community safely learning. Through that lens, I'd like to acknowledge how incredibly adaptive our teachers and students have been to move to a virtual learning environment and how incredibly supportive and understanding our families have been as we lifted the 2020 school year off the ground. Now, as we turn to the second nine weeks, the task for us is to consider whether we can continue to do better for our students and do so safely. I can say with confidence that we have the ability and capacity to do better for our students by moving to stage three. In stage two, we have between two to three students in our building every day. We were fortunate to be able to offer internet connectivity to our families, so our numbers are very low. After working in the virtual environment for the first five weeks, we feel we are ready to secure the next safety net to ensure that more students are successful. After a brief transition, many students found their rhythm and are doing relatively well. However, we hope to be able to work with our teams to identify students who are not thriving in this virtual environment and whose social, emotional, and academic needs can be better met by coming to school and working with a learning coach each day. Another aspect of stage three that has the potential to improve our students' experiences through our clubs. For all of our students, social interaction is a critical part of what they are missing in a virtual environment. We are in the process of setting up these clubs in a virtual world. However, we would much rather get these students away from their screen and safely face-to-face, especially while the weather still allows us to meet outside. In closing, I would like to once again thank you for all that you are doing for our school communities, and I hope that you will approve this recommendation to move to stage three, allowing the school, staff, student, and family to make the decision to attend school if the data shows that the student is not thriving in this virtual environment. We greatly need the ability to bring these children to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Also with us is Dara Bottom from Almaro High School. Dara?
Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin. Thank you, members of the board, for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Dara Bottom, Principal of Almaro High School. I want to start by sharing how impressed and proud I am of our faculty and staff at Almaro High School for the design, development, and the implementation of our virtual learning experiences for our students. This goes across Almaro County Public Schools. Our teachers and staff deserve so much credit. They may not wear capes, but we should all acknowledge that they are heroes in our community. I love my staff, and I also love my students. Tonight, I will speak from my perspective from the high school side. I've had many opportunities to talk to my students throughout the pandemic. I feel for them. I know many want to be back in school for academic, social, and emotional reasons. I have seen an increased need from our students to receive individual and small group support that can best be done in person. Individual and small group academic support, along with student support through many of their passions and pursuits, is a necessity for many teenagers. I've worked in high schools for over 27 years, and I understand that band, drama, yearbook, robotics, sports, clubs, and other extracurricular activities are part of the fabric of high school student experiences. While we can't simply return to normal, I believe we can follow safety protocols and practices to provide these voluntary opportunities in academics and extracurriculars that our students not only crave but need. Honestly, I am afraid we are losing some of our students at the high school level. We must be purposeful, deliberate, and safe to start getting them back. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Bottom. And also, we have Rick Rehovak, Principal at Monticello High School. Welcome, Rick.
Thank you, Patrick. Good evening, members of the Almaro County School Board. My name is Rick Rehovak, and I serve as the Principal of Monticello High School. I appreciate the opportunity that I have this evening to share a few words concerning your decision to move our school division from stage two into stage three. I would like to commend our teachers, staff, students, and parents who are spending endless hours to make our learning situation work. Kudos to all of you for what you do every single day. Thank you so much. I want to start with our mission. The core purpose of Alamooral County Public Schools is to establish a community of learners and learning through relationships, relevance, and rigor, one student at a time. And I know that it was just mentioned that relationships was placed in front because of the importance, and we all agree with that. We're asking everyone in our school division to build positive relationships with our students, parents, and communities. We know that a positive relationship will lead to greater success in the classroom, but more importantly, it ensures that our students and staff members are in a good state with regards to their mental health. Building a relationship does not happen overnight. Spending quality time together helps lay a solid foundation. Zoom is a good virtual platform that we use to teach from and build relationships in our current state, but it does not replace the face-to-face interactions that foster positive relationships. As Dara just mentioned, high school is special time for children. There is an academic component, but there's also the social aspect of school. We know that when we return to face-to-face instructions, things will not be the same, and students are not going to be hanging out in large groups like they did before. But anytime they have the opportunity to physically see each other, to laugh, to share a thought, to solve a problem, even though they're six feet apart, it's a good time. They need the chance to grow up together, to build memories, and to do this safely. There are school divisions around us that have done a great job at opening up. They have created a template that we can learn from, that we can adapt and use to meet the needs of our school division. Finally, on the surface, stage three does not look like it has a tremendous impact on secondary schools. But if we do not move on, we're looking at the real possibility we may not get to stage four this school year, which, as we all know, it's hybrid learning for the majority of students in Alamooral County public schools. That means our students can miss an entire year, an entire year of face-to-face instruction. As you consider the options in front of you, please remember that we need to do what is best for students, teachers, and communities safely. We know you will do that. This is not a sprint, but a marathon, one step in front of the other each day. We have to continue to move forward, to make progress, to forge ahead, knowing that we have fourteen thousand of the most precious and important people in the world that we need to take care of each and every day. We've got this. We're stronger together. Thank you all for what you do every single day.
Rick, Dara, Beth, Seth, thank you all so much for for being here tonight. I know it's been an extremely long day. You all are working hard, leading our schools, and so again, I really want to thank you for taking the time to be with us tonight. So the final consideration we'll discuss before opening up for discussion is our ability to implement the division's instructional and health plans. At this time, I'll turn things over to Dr. Kaiser.
Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin. I'm Claire Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent. As you all are aware, in order to move from one stage to the next, we must have the staff and the resources in place to be able to implement our instructional plan. Before I discuss the data with you, I want to echo what our principals and Dr. Haas have shared, recognizing the tremendous efforts of our teachers and support staff as we began the school year in our current return-to-school stage. While the learning curve has been steep, our teachers have embraced the challenge of learning about and implementing virtual learning opportunities for our students, and they have truly done a remarkable job. As we consider the proposed shift to stage three, we recognize that in addition to more students coming into our schools, more teachers and support staff will also be required to do so. In stage three, all teachers and support staff who are associated with students coming in for face-to-face learning will be asked to report back to school. That includes our pre-K through third-grade classroom teachers and teaching assistants, some special education teachers and teaching assistants, as well as our ESOL teachers and staff. Approximately ninety percent of our teachers completed the recent staff survey that Dr. McLaughlin has referenced previously. As you may expect, for as much of our staff wants to be back with their students, they are also very cognizant of how the pandemic may impact their ability to physically return to school. Feedback from our teachers, when asked their intentions regarding for in-person learning, indicated that about two-thirds of them will be able to perform the work expected as outlined. About one-third indicated that they would be able to work with an accommodation to continue to perform their work through virtual teaching. When we break out those teachers who will be asked to return in stage three, you'll notice that our pre-K through third-grade teachers and special education teachers align closely with the two-thirds to one-third ratio of our overall teaching force who completed the survey. The availability of two-thirds of our teachers to come back for in-person learning aligns with the desires of our parents, who, as you saw previously, indicated that two-thirds of them, or about two-thirds of them, would send their children to school at the time that they are invited to attend. You'll also notice a section here about the leaves of absence. About eleven percent of our teachers indicated that they would be requesting a leave of absence, with a slightly higher percentage for those that are in the preschool through third-grade teacher category. The information provided is not necessarily mutually exclusive, as we anticipate that some will request a leave of absence only if they are unable to receive a virtual teaching accommodation. When we look at the overall number of requests for accommodations, the results show us that across all groups, all teachers, pre-K through third-grade and special ed, most will request an accommodation due to health-related reasons, either for themselves or for a family member. A smaller number will request an accommodation specifically for childcare needs, most often associated with the impact of COVID-19 on their own child's school schedule. Based on the numbers here, there are other factors for reasons that they may request an accommodation or leave of absence, but we are unable to ascertain the specifics from this survey. What the survey does tell us is that we do have enough staff to fulfill the needs in stage three. The numbers may not align perfectly across the grade levels and across the schools, but we do feel that we are able to support the children who we anticipate returning to school in stage three. So going back to the metric of do we have the staff, I feel certain that we can say yes to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kaiser. In summary, when we presented our factors to the board in July, we had two areas of green, two yellows, and two reds. Currently, our first two factors remain green. Applicable executive orders and ordinances would allow a move to stage three, and the guidance offered from our local health department is clear. The health department feedback has also moved our current categorization of the COVID-19 conditions to green. They've explained to us the disproportionate impact of the University of Virginia on our data and also shared that they are not seeing community transmission from UVA to the surrounding community. This is supported by our school health advisory board and from the actual experiences of our schools in the regions in of our schools in the region that have reopened. Our testing and tracking capabilities are much more robust than they were in July, and our surveying indicates that we have adequate staffing and resources to open our schools in stage three. One area we still categorize as yellow is our feedback. We see distinct differences in the feedback we've received from our staff and our community stakeholders. We know that online learning is in a much better state today than this past spring, due almost exclusively to the dedication of our teachers. As good as our online experience has become, we do not feel it should be a permanent substitute for in-person instruction, and we feel that the student experience will be even further improved as students return to our buildings. I want to thank the board for their attention to tonight's presentation and to all of our guests who have been here to provide input. At this point, we'll turn things over to the board for questions and discussion.
Do we have questions from the board?
Can I? Personal privilege, Mr. Chair, I need to, I need a break.
Yeah, okay, that was what I was gonna also mention. We can take maybe about a ten-minute break at this point and then come back and have discussion and emotion. That's a possibility. So by show of, well, let me give a quick vote. Dr. Akut, are you all right with that, having a ten-minute break followed by discussion and emotion?
Sounds perfect. We could break until ten o'clock.
Okay, Mr. Alcarro.
Yes.
Ms. Carlson.
Yes.
Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Ober.
Yes.
Ms. Osburn.
Yes.
Mr. Tribe.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll take a ten-minute break. We'll come back at ten o'clock. Mr. Chair? As a, as a point of order, will you be asking for a motion before questions or after questions? I think it'll be better to have it before questions, and then we can have questions during the discussion.
Okay.
I can make a motion.
Okay. All right, it's nine fifty-nine. We can wait one more minute.
Sure.
I always like to begin things early. Let's just go. Why are you laughing, Jono?
Can I ask the?
Laughing, who was laughing?
Explain early.
What now?
I'm asking my colleague to explain her definition of early.
Who, Ms. Carlson? But it's now ten o'clock, so we are reconvened.
Later.
Okay, all right, so we are now reconvened. So Mrs. Carlson, do you have a motion based on item eight dash two? Return to school?
Yes, I move that we accept the superintendent's Yes, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for a move to stage three and approve said move.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Carlson, second by Dr. Acuff and Ms. Dale Carroll, that we accept the superintendent's recommendation to move to stage three. We, the floor is now ready for discussion and/or questions. So, do we have questions or any items that we'd like to discuss related to that motion?
I have a question that I think probably it's directed to Patrick, but I'm not sure, so I'll throw it out and see. See who is best, whoever can answer can answer if you can. We looked at a slide and it said the comfort level of. I'm just not, I'm sorry, guys, it's tired, it's late.
Was it the transmission rate?
No, 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 it's, it's, the, the survey, the question about how are your kids doing?
Yes.
It wasn't broken out by, 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 by age category, is, is it broken out anywhere for the pre-K through third?
We, we can break that out, I don't have that broken out in front of me right now.
Okay, do you, do you know, am I being articulate enough to, to?
Yes, I know, there, so there's, yep, there's a question, how well do you know, I'm sorry, it was compared to traditional in-person instruction, how successful has your child been academically this year?
Right, and is there any way to, to break that out from a pre-K through, through third?
Let me see if I can grab that for you, Dave, and if I, if I can get it quickly, I will come back on and tell you.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question regarding the School Health Advisory Board, I saw on that slide that there was a dissension on, on what they agreed upon, can you speak a little bit about what that's all about? Because that advisory board are people that, you know, we've elected to judge these things.
Yeah, the dissenting member was a physical education teacher.
Was there a particular reason that?
Probably, I would, if I were going to sum it up, I would just say it reflects the comments that we've heard from the teachers tonight.
But before going into some of the other questions that I think we'll, we'll end up talking about, I would like to ask Mr. Trout. For a student's point of view in terms of how the virtual learning has gone for you? And what your thoughts would be in terms of wanting to, not wanting to move forward eventually with hybrid classes in stage four?
Yeah, for sure. Personally, as a high school senior, naturally, the, the desire is to go back for whatever period we can, given the situation. But I feel like in looking at, you know, kind of my, I have a, I have a tenth grade brother who's also at Monticello and, and being able to, to communicate with some of the other students in our area. Everything has gone relatively smoothly, smoothly. From, from what I've heard, you know, naturally, there's going to be the connect, the connectivity issues and the. The, you know, the, the, the kind of day-to-day issues that clearly we encounter on a, on a, on a regular basis. But I feel that in terms of the, the operation and the, and the, and the, the function, the functionality of the, of the resources that students and teachers have been given. I feel like we've been placed in a pretty solid place in terms of being able to, being able to learn. With some degree of, of effectiveness and efficiency. That, that I think is certainly, that is certainly, I think, a noticeable improvement from what we had in the spring, given the time and all that, but. You know, other than that. The first couple of weeks were a little difficult in terms of just kind of figuring everything out, but, but since then. From, from what I've seen, it's been really smooth sailing.
Perfect, thank you very much for that, one thing I would, I would throw out, or I would suggest to people listening in. Who have not gone to the back-to-school website. It, it, there's a mitigation video that is available, and I'm sure all of the members of, of the board have seen it. With Lindsay Snoddy and I'm forgetting the one other person who was in it, and, oh, Eileen Gomez. And it is very well done and very informative, so that if there are questions for how things are going to be handled in classrooms. With the five. You know, masks and social distancing and hand hygiene, cleaning and disinfectants and, and contact tracing, all things Dr. Fauci has talked to the country about. You'll see in that video that it has not only been thought through, but it's already in the process of, of being implemented.
Does anybody have any indication of how much cleaning and disinfecting that we have been expecting of teachers and TAs in the classroom and how that, how that's going? Or is it custodial stuff?
Hi, get my video on, so we have outlined our cleaning and disinfection, disinfection protocol, and it's an and, right? So our custodians are doing high-touch surfaces during the day, including door handles and bathrooms, but within the classroom space itself, it's the responsibility of the teacher, the TA. Each classroom is stocked with a bucket of disinfectant wipes and their, and those surfaces are wiped down throughout the day.
Mr. Oberg, I was able to, to find that breakout that you were asking for. So we had, when we asked the K-three parents, when we asked them about academic success, how successful has your child been compared to last year? That average weighted score was actually a little bit lower, it was about a 2.5 instead of a 2.7. We also did break out the question that we asked teachers about how well they know their students, and that one was a little bit higher. That was about a 3.0 compared to a 2.7 for the pre-K through three responses that we had.
So the teachers are feeling better about it, but the, the parents are feeling worse about it?
That's accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carnard, are you still there? I don't see you on there.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thanks, so how does the amount of instructional time for hybrid students in stage three compare to the instructional time for all students in stage two?
So right now, Monday through Thursday are instructional days with in-person, not in-person, virtual, real-time instruction synchronous time. Where students have half a day with their teacher synchronously, then half a day with follow-up synchronous work. So under stage three, those, those two days of full synchronous learning take place in person, and they still have two days of asynchronous learning, which should be at home, and the Friday would remain an asynchronous day. So minute to minute, it adds up to about the same, however they are highly condensed, so obviously, when we're in person, we'll be adding in breaks and time to move around and recess and things like that. So they add up to a bit less, but it's probably more quality time during that time.
I would add, though, it depends on the grade level, correct? So kindergarten would have less time than first grade, then second grade, then third grade, so, for example, for kindergarten, it's about an hour and a half to two hours. For the AM or PM block, so they would get considerably more time when we go, we would go to a hybrid.
Right, additionally, during those days when they are not in person, that's when we can do their specials, there are essential classes like PE, library, art and music, as well as intervention services, so they can get some synchronous work virtually during that time as well.
Thank you, and one thing that came up often, as you, as we all heard, was this question of shifting teachers. Would students in both virtual and hy- hybrid need to do that, if we shift to three?
Is this classroom assignments, is that the question?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really, it's yes and no, I mean, it depends on the individual situation, so if a student, let's say. It goes in person and their homeroom teacher may be someone who has a, has ADA permission to not work in school or chooses not to, they'll have to be reassigned to a in-person teacher, which is probably going to be the rare case. Students who opt to stay virtually, if their teacher who they've been working with is not staying virtually as well, they'll be reassigned to another virtual teacher, so the numbers will be small, but not insignificant to students who will probably be reassigned.
Claire, are we? Are, will we take all ADA requests, will all of those be granted?
Our, our anticipation is that we will be able to do all of the ADA requests, the ones that we don't know that we, we honestly don't know the numbers yet. All of the, what we're able to do beyond the ADA request is going to be dependent on how many of our students choose to stay virtual and how we may be able to do some kind of creative scheduling and assigning within our schools. One of the things that's going, should the board decide to go to stage three, what will happen is next week, Ms. Collins and I are meeting with all of our elementary principals to start some of the staffing discussions and needs. Simultaneously, those ADA and other requests for accommodations will be coming into HR and we'll be working kind of simultaneously to work it all out. Very honestly, when you look at the numbers across the board, our hope is that we will kind of have an even match and be able to accommodate everybody, but I, I would be remiss to sit here tonight and say I can guarantee that.
And when you're looking at the numbers across the board, have you been looking at them broken out by school?
We do have them broken out by school, the, the, the two-thirds, one-third that I described earlier does not align exactly like that across the schools. But how a school is able to staff is really going to, the size of the school and the number of classrooms that they have for school is going to play some role in that as well. And so, again, there, there's no school that I look at and I think, oh my gosh, from the projections, we're not going to be able to staff it, I, I do feel confident that we'll be fine there.
Ms. Schmidt, I, we got an email today from a bus driver saying that students will be on every seat on the bus, and I just wanted to ask if that's accurate and. If, I mean, that doesn't seem like it aligns to six feet of distance, so I just wanted to get more information on that.
So we've outlined our full transportation health plan on the return-to-school website, and one of the things is that we are going to reduce capacity. And but we're doing that by, you are correct, that is accurate, that seating one child per seat. We acknowledge that is not the full six foot of distance, we deem that not practical on a school bus. However, we feel like with other mitigating strategies, strategies such as mask-wearing, hand sanitizing and other means, cracking windows, that we do have a safe plan, it's been reviewed by the health department and approved.
I had a phone call yesterday from a gentleman asking about, he has a grandson at Monticello, and he was asking about the athletic. Activities, going back into athletics with some concerns that other schools in the area will be more competitive because they've been doing it. Particularly weightlifting longer than we would have been, but is it conditioning that they are going to be doing coming back into school? Or is there going to be competition involved in, in, in some of these sports? I'd just like to get that clarified.
Yep, so good question, Jay Thomas, Director of Secondary Education, our athletic directors have been working. Through a lot of different protocols, this, in July, for three weeks, they actually piloted conditioning. What would happen is they are in the process of putting together and finalizing protocols and procedures for each of the sports to be able to condition in November. But VHSL sports actually start in December, the first week of December, so the competitions would. The practices would officially begin at the beginning of December and then, then games would, would start in December as well for the first season. So November would be conditioning, December would be practices, and December would also be games.
Thank you, Chair.
But is there a way that we could separate that piece out from the stages? So that if we did not go to stage three, that, that could still happen, those sports could still happen?
So, you know, speaking to the athletic directors, that is something that we would like to be able to have considered if, if we didn't get to stage three?
I guess I, I would just like to say the reason that I am in favor of stage three is that. It is, it is our job, of course, to balance the expert advice we have about the health and safety issues in school. Against what's best, in the best educational interests of our kids. I was on the, the call yesterday with Dean Pianta at UVA, and he talked in quite dire terms about the growing achievement gap. And how. The failure to get at least our youngest kids back into school could create a generational achievement gap that we would have a very difficult time digging out of. So not to even permit our parents and families and students to have the option of coming into school, I think, is. Not soundly based on the facts of what we've been advised by the best, you know, public health experts in our county. And I also am impressed that one of our colleagues, Ms. Carlson, has kids who will be eligible to go into school, and I don't know what hers. And she has. You know, made the motion to move to stage three, so I don't know, Katrina, if you wanted to speak to that.
Can we not talk about, can we not talk about individuals, that makes me uncomfortable. I, I don't think Katrina needs to talk about what she's going to do with her kids, respectfully.
Are there any other questions or any other, other discussions on this item?
Yes, we mentioned the achievement gap, do we have any of that data on the slides that we saw broken out by race? In terms of. How parents feel about coming back or how their, how they feel their students are doing?
We can break that up by school, but we do not have it broken up by racial demographics.
Do we have any sense at all as to what non-white people think about this? About moving to the next stage, do we have any sort of data at all? I probably said that badly, but.
Ellen, even if you didn't say it correctly, because I know it's hard to, you know, who knows, I'm, I'm happy that you brought it up. Because one of our speakers talked about the voices that we aren't hearing, and that's something that sits heavily with me. It's something I had to push myself on, I know, I don't want to make you uncomfortable, Dave, but I've had to push out of my own bubble in terms of hearing this new modified stage three and thinking. That this was just going to be more of a disruption to my life, you know, it's going to make it more difficult, I've got my situation set up, and I had to think, who are all those families that we're not hearing from? Because a lot of families, I've been, went and visited schools, our ESOL students are in there, they selected that option, and I don't know if we've really heard their voices. The voices that I continue to hear in my circle, which I'm acknowledging is a bubble that I'm in, are parents who are worried about switching teachers, which is a valid concern, and I have a question about that, but. That's a minor disruption in someone's life to switch a teacher, I mean, I know in my work with children in the foster care, there's families that have lost jobs, that are losing their house, that's the kind of disruption that they're dealing with. And they need an opportunity to have an education, and, and so I, and I'm taking, I'm just, I'm happy you asked that, Ellen, I am, I'm curious.
As, as Katrina mentioned, there was a one teacher that was African-American that was going to address that item, and unfortunately, she ran out of time before I think she could give us her full statement. But at least that one person was addressing the issue.
The problem, and I think we have to push ourselves on board members, and it's, it's hard, and I don't know if we're going to do it correctly, is that. it's hard and I don't know if we're going to do it correctly, is that almost any voice we do hear in this forum by default is not the people that we're worried about. Like, we're worried about that large percentage of our population that doesn't speak English. We haven't never had one thing that's had been translated from someone. So even her, I, I agree. I'm happy that she brought it up, but I just, it is something that has weighed on me when we've made these decisions. I have realized that I exist in a very privileged bubble in many ways and I have to constantly ask myself what's going on in other people's lives and, and many people rely on school, like the kids that rely on school for food. I hear that. And I, and I think, okay, yeah, but we all have food, like, but really, there are kids that rely on going to school to eat a meal. You know, it's difficult and I just want to always, it's tough.
Yeah, that's a really good point that Ms. Osborne did raise. Because we don't have any data really on that. So that really is a good point.
Our, our best chance to hear from all of our families with, with diversity is when the students are in school. That's when we do our climate surveys. That's when we're able to really actually hear from each student about their background. When we send out surveys to the community, we, we typically get the same responses. I mean, surveys are, surveys are very useful, but as I said earlier in my comments to the board, the, the very same students and families that in many ways we are charged to be the equalizer for, their voice goes unheard in these conversations. Even when we were looking at changing the name of Paul Kale Elementary School, we heard, we didn't really hear much from the members of that community that were probably most impacted by segregation and desegregation. It's, it's the same thing over and over again in Alamo County. And it's been going on, like I said, Dr. Kastner hired me back in 2004 and he said, the people that we help, the people that we're here to help, we often don't hear from them and that's, we need to to pay attention to that and be mindful of it. But I'll come back to what I said earlier. We had all the students in school or at least some, some semblance of that, we could, we could easily hear from them about what their experiences are, but it's hard to do that when we don't have them in attendance. When you look at the attendance data that we have, we sent an email out to the board that parses it out. It's kind of a numbers game for the State Department of Education. For elementary school, they allow you to count almost any kind of contact, whether asynchronous or synchronous with the school for anything during a day. So if a child shows up for half a minute on the screen in PE class, that student counts as present for that day. They don't even have to be in there synchronously. They just have to tap into it at some point. So we don't even know if they do it or if a parent goes in and signs in for them. So that's why those attendance rates for elementary schools are so high. I heard someone mention that earlier that they had really great attendance. They, we really have no way of knowing because of the way that data is collected. And the reason the State Department set it up that way is because they don't want school divisions to really lose even more funding for ADM shortages than we already have. I'll point out that a good thousand of our families have already walked, voted with their feet. They've, the people who have the means are, have their children either in pods in the community, spending thousands and thousands of dollars to pay, I hate to say it, but paying some of our teachers who've resigned or gone on long-term leave to be their teachers in that pod. So that's what's happening now is the, the students who are left, in many cases, they just couldn't afford to do something different or their parents have to make some really difficult decisions as, as Katrina pointed out. Now you see it in the high school data because we're required by the state for high school data to actually parse out asynchronous and synchronous attendance. And when you look at, and then you combine it. So when you get a chance to look at those tables again, you'll see that synchronous attendance for Latinx students is about 60%. Synchronous attendance for African-American students is about 65%. Synchronous attendance for free reduced lunch students is below 60%. We would, if we had that during a regular school year, the, the buildings would be, you would notice it in the building with those kinds of attendance percentages. And I think probably all of our schools would be on call with the Virginia Department of Education to try to address it. But right now, to save funding for school divisions, attendance rates are dramatically inflated. And for, when I'm sitting in on the elementary school classes, the students that are there, they, they are engaged. They are, I think the teachers are doing a great job with the students who tune in. It's all the students who aren't tuning in and, and they're falling off our radar. The last little piece of information I'll throw out is that reports to Child Protective Services dropped dramatically when the COVID virus came on the scene. And that's because teachers are mandated reporters for child abuse and neglect. Those numbers didn't drop dramatically in our community because families were doing great and all the abuse stopped. Alcoholism and drug abuse and all the other things that impact our, our students stopped. It's because nobody sees it. No one, no one, when, when these children tune in for their classes, for teachers, and I'm, I'm not knocking teachers, I'm not trying to say anything against what they said. But they oftentimes do not even see the students. They see an avatar, a Pokemon, you know, an animal. They never see the students' face. My wife's an eighth grade teacher for Buford Middle School and very rarely does she get to see the students' faces. And we don't require them to show their, their faces. So to say that they know their students really well, I, I would be surprised at that. I, I don't know if they would know them if they saw them in person when they come in. So I, I do think those voices from those families that we want to hear, we're not going to hear in this decision.
I would like to add something, Dr. Huss. Just in being, you know, living and being in the ESOL office since March, I've worked in the office every day with a couple of my colleagues. And I will say to you in a qualitative way, our ESOL families would love to be back in school. And I'm saying that very passionately. I don't have numbers to share with you, but I have the qualitative feedback from the over 400 families I've spoken to and my whole office staff. And they've been very grateful for all the support from our teachers, from our ESOL office. Just they've expressed nothing but gratitude, but with the message that they wish to be back in school. And all the students I've visited in schools that I spoke to, all of our ESOL students said how happy they were to be in school with a teacher or a learning coach.
And I think that, that speaks to what Dr. Akoff was saying before and that I wholeheartedly agree with is is giving parents some choices in here. It doesn't just apply to upper level, it applies to everybody. And, and, and you know, parental choice is something that, that if, you know, I've talked with all of you. And by the way, thank you to all the members of the board for the conversations we've had over the last week or so. I have learned a lot from, from each of you and I really appreciate your sharing thoughts with me. You know, and on July 30th, that was the reason that I voted for stage two was because we were giving parents some choices. And that's why, in large part, why I wanted, I'm going to vote for stage three. There are a number of other reasons as well, but I, I think to you know, to, to the point about ESOL, I think a lot of the, of the students who may come from disadvantaged situations or be in, in the achievement gap, you know, I, their parents love them. I think they'd love to have them in a better situation and, you know, and, and helping them. So that's all part of why I'm going to vote for stage three.
I agree. I would love to have all the ESOL kids back in and all the special ed kids back in. My main hesitation, I, I do think that, that we could probably handle more students on campuses. I, I really have a problem with the disruption that we're going to cause to a lot of K-three families with switching teachers around. And I know there's no way to tell about how many students are going to have to be reassigned. But we always hear how important relationships are and now we're willing to disrupt that for some, for going to school every other day. And I'm not convinced that the trade-off is worth it. However, if there were a way to figure out how to get more kids on campus without breaking those relationships and creating havoc on families for having to reestablish routines, you know, I'd be all for that.
You know, I, I very much agree with your point on that. I guess my one concern is at one, what point during the year would it be easy to, to make a change? If, if they went, if we waited until January and then teachers were changed then, I think that's going to be a, a really tough situation. If we do it in the spring, it's going to be an even tougher situation.
If, if the basis of the decision is that, then we just have to accept we're not opening for the rest of the year. Because I, I mean, that, that is, that is something that's going to occur. Whenever we move to stage three, that is going to happen. So there, there's an argument to be made that it would be less traumatic now than three months or six months from now. I'm not, I'm not saying it's not the correct analysis. I'm just saying that that's, you know, that's, that's a dangerous, that's a dangerous thing to be basing your, your decision on.
For me though, it's, it's that at this point in time where I see what we've seen happen with the numbers and I, and I hear what we're saying that UVA is on its own. But I, that's not true to me in my lived experience. But to me then, okay, the risk is still great. I still think the risk is great. And then we're going to break that for the reward that is for me questionable in terms of, you know, two full days for kids. And then three full days of asynchronous. And then breaking these relationships, I mean, when I was listening to public comment, like I, I definitely went into this meeting thinking about all of the data, right? I mean, obviously I look at data all day, every day. And I was thinking about that. And then I was listening to public comment and I just, I was just thinking about all of the teachers that I've had who I still think about and the lessons that I've learned from them and those relationships that I had. And even though we'd gotten like dozens of emails about those relationships, I still sort of like, eh, okay. But then I started thinking about it when I was like hearing people actually talking about it. And I just feel like the risk and reward at this moment in time, it doesn't make sense to me. And I understand, like, I fully respect all of the arguments here. I do want to get, I, I agree with Ellen, like I would love to get more ESOL kids in. I would love to get more special education kids in and that 5% that we were talking about who we know are disengaged. I would love that. I don't know if there is a plan that allows that. Right now, that's not the one that's in front of us. So
Yeah. And I wouldn't recommend that because then you're, you're having segregation in your schools. All of a sudden, you're, you're isolating a, a community and saying because you're, you're ESOL or you're black or you're, don't have the resources of other people, we're going to make you now come into the schools. I feel like that's been one of the issues we've had. We're not allowed to put special education students, and rightly so, out in a trailer. We're not, we're not to have them on, on different places or different sites. And one of the things that concerned me early on was my first, one of my first visits to a school was to Monticello High School. And there were several students that had actually come in first thing in the morning because they didn't have adequate internet access. Well, when they realized that hardly any of their peers were there, even, even though they knew that they had friends that couldn't really get on the internet, guess what they did? They called, they, they, they left the school. They walked away from the school. So pretty soon there was one student left there that didn't have internet access. And then the next day she didn't come in. There's a, there's part of the reason we have schools and, and people come together in the schools is because it's all different kinds of people being together in a school together and integrating in that way. And that's what students look forward to. That's what I heard Will saying, that it's the social aspect of it. And it's very important to their development. So I think I would caution the board, it may be illegal to say, we're just going to pick, pick black students and say, well, we, we're really concerned about you, so you need to come into the schools. Or we're going to pick ESOL students and all by yourself, you're going to come into the schools. I wouldn't even just keep those groups of students after school for a particular program for the same reasons. Because it isolates them and singles them out.
Okay. In addition to all of the things that have been already said, three things still stand out in my mind and these are the ones that have not changed really since we took our first vote in July. And that's the fact that the cases in our area continue to rise. The positivity rate is above the state average. And we can't really say with any certainty, what's the transmission rate going to be? Because we don't have walls that separate us from UVA or the city. So those are the three really things that stand out in my, my mind. The uncertainty of spreading the virus. And it's a fix on our students.
I, 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 I totally get where you're coming from, Graham. I, I really do. And I, like I said, I'm concerned about the fact that the, the students infection rate at UVA has stayed pretty, stayed pretty constant, but all of a sudden the staffs are going up. And so if you see the increase at UVA, it's staff members that are increasing in the infection. But where I come down on this, and this is the, this is the hardest freaking thing. You know, I, I, this is really, really challenging. But I've heard so many people over the past eight months ignoring science. I, I just, I've, I've heard that over and over again, you know, and, and choosing to believe what they choose to believe irrespective of analytical data. And I'm not, I'm not an epidemiologist. I'm not a physician. I, I know what a, a lower than a one knock rate is, but I, I don't really. I mean, that's just, and so where I'm left with is my gut, my, just my gut, my heart says, why would we risk it? But my brain says, listen, we have experts who have done this analysis, who've said, look, as long as these things are followed, it's safe. And I don't, I don't have any reason to doubt that analysis. I haven't seen analysis that's contrary to it. I mean, we have a Department of Education, we have a Department of Health that sets these guidelines. We didn't only meet the guidelines, we've exceeded those guidelines. And so if I, if I substitute my independent judgment for their analytical judgment, from my perspective, I had better have a, a real good analysis and factual reason for it. And even though my gut tells me one thing, I, I can't substantiate that with evidence. And, you know, everything we've done on this board for the past five years that I've been on it, we keep saying, look, let's look at the numbers, let's look at the evidence. Which is how we knew, if you ask people's gut instincts in Alamo County four years ago, how are we doing on the, on the, on the racial divide in education? I'd be willing to bet you there are a whole lot of people would say, oh, I think we're doing great. And in their gut, I think, you know, we're really making progress until we looked at the numbers and said, wow, our analysis is completely wrong. And we got to look at the numbers. We have to look at the analysis. And in this case, I get it. I get, it's a fundamental fear. I get it. I'm as afraid as anybody. But if we have experts that tell us, look, as long as you follow these guidelines, this is the best solution. I think, I think until we find out that they're wrong, I think we need to follow them.
I can completely understand what you're saying. But the main thing that I think I heard was that there's still uncertainty with even the experts, even though we could follow all of those guidelines. Still, there'd be some uncertainty there. And even though it might be really, really small and really, really hard to pinpoint, it's just that that uncertainty is still there. And even though it might be really, really small and really, really hard to pinpoint, it's just that that uncertainty is still there. And to me, I can't really, with a, a good conscience, be able to support moving to uh stage three right now. I can understand all of the arguments, but still that uncertainty of transmission and some of the other uncertainties are still there. And that's maybe my main misgiving.
Well, we do have two, two fail safes on that. No, maybe that's not the right terminology, Mr. Page. Um, A, even before November ninth, if there's an outbreak, we can immediately fall back to level three. And if there is an outbreak, you know, beyond the need to close a school, for example, Matt, we've already, under our plan, vested Matt with the authority to immediately go back to a lower level. So I was very much heartened by the improvements in our communication with the school, with the, the health department, uh, the improvements in testing ability, the protocols for contact tracing. Um, and, and just the turnaround in, in terms of the testing that. I mean, there's, there's not going to be a fail safe measure, but we do have options to back off immediately if, if we get that data.
Right.
True. And I think, sorry, sorry, Mr. Page. Um, I I think speaking as kind of a voice of the, the, the high school community in the area um undergoing, for the, for the county to, to take, you know, take on that risk to, to understand that, yes, you know, this is potentially putting kids in danger. The, the, I feel like the widespread, the widespread voice, the widespread kind of ideas in, in lots of high schoolers is that they, they're looking for, for, for the school board to take this opportunity to, to give them a chance. Um, similar to what Mr. Verhovak said, and really he's been saying that um since the start of the year, but really, uh, looking at, you know, this, this what, what we really want to be back and, and the, the only way that that happens is through what is clearly taking a risk. Um, and I I, I actually feel similarly to uh Mr. Ober in terms of, you know, my gut is telling me not to, but, but the I just feel like the, the widespread um opinions of high schoolers just more or less to, to do what I'm here, to do what I'm here to do um is, is looking for, for this, for this board to, to put them in a position in which they can, they can be back in the school environment as well.
Good. Thank you so much for that, Mr. Trout. That really is enlightening. So thank you so much for your, uh, your input.
Yeah, if, if we want to bring roughly 4,000 kids back to school, I would, I would much rather spread that out across grade levels where we're, we have a better sense of the teachers that want to be there um and create less chaotic situations in families for changing things. So.
Like we've said, this is an extremely tough decision. So are there any other questions or comments uh from board members before we take a vote?
I just want to say one more thing, um, just that I interpret the data about surrounding school divisions differently. Um, when we say that there have been three outbreaks, uh, school has only been open in a very limited fashion for one month in some divisions. And we've had three so far. So to me, I interpret that data differently. So I know that we're talking about like unknowns. To me, that feels more known. So that's the last thing I want to say.
Right. And in addition to what there were 27 across the state, the three and a half.
Luisa County has been open for two months and they've had no outbreaks.
Okay.
I have a process related question. I do think we're ready to take the vote, but once we take the vote, depending on where we land, I think there's some valid questions from the community and from teachers that we should discuss. I don't know if it's appropriate to discuss it at the end of this meeting or not.
Okay, um, after we take the vote, depending on what it is, then we'll also be looking at future directions that um the staff will be moving into. So I think your comment will sort of come in, you know, or your concern will sort of come in at that, at that point. So are there any other questions or discussion on this item? Okay, Mrs. Thompson, please call the roll.
Yes, this is to accept the superintendent's recommendation to move to stage three.
Right.
A motion by um Ms. Carlson, seconded by Mr. Alcaro. Ms. Lee.
Yes.
No.
Oh, Ms. Lee, that was very fine that you had seconded the motion.
Oh, I did not. John O. Did?
Oh, you did?
Seconded, yes, that's correct.
And even if you seconded, you can still vote no.
Right, but okay, okay, all right, so moving on.
Yep. Ms. Lee, you voted now?
No.
Yep. Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
No.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Chairman Page?
No. So the motion passes by a vote of four to three to move to um stage three. And again, like I told our board, I sort of made the announcement before. Um, I think that we have to realize now that we have taken that vote, that as a board, we are now unified with that decision. And as a vision with our superintendent and the cabinet, we are unified behind that decision. So we'll be moving forward then as a unified system, not as four, three split, but as a seven, zero unified division.
Remember who, who these people are. So come election time, we can make sure people.
Um, it's, okay. All right, so um, we will now go back to, um, I think Dr. McLaughlin and the team of thousands that we heard from bringing us all of their points to um to receive or hear future directions that we'll be taking.
Ms. Carlson, did, did you have something?
Yeah, I think, I know I'm kind of out of line with the procedure, but I didn't want to over discuss it since it seemed like we, we were ready to take a vote. But I just would, I feel remiss if I didn't acknowledge how difficult of a vote that, that was. And, and there, I hope that any constituents who have issues, which it sounds like there might be, um, well, please reach out because I'm always happy to discuss and, and hear from people. And I, I'm pretty sure I can say that for the rest of the board as well. Um, I just wanted to throw that in there before we jump into next.
Agreed.
So, uh, thank you, everyone. I, I believe Ms. Collins was going to take us just uh through some of the next steps that we were planning on if the board went ahead with stage three.
And we, we just have some things that we will do immediately, and that's what, things will happen tomorrow. The elementary principals will hold staff meetings uh tomorrow morning to discuss next steps. They developed a slide deck so that they would make sure that all elementary teachers understood what the, the next uh pieces were and, and their role in developing uh the different uh components of the, the plans. Uh, we'll also be just sending a message to our families and announcing the decision and beginning to solicitate, solicit the hybrid or virtual choice and the transportation need. This is similar to what we talked about when we were, we were looking at the hybrid approach to everyone, for everyone. That we will, we will talk to every parent, and we have a process for doing that. Uh, then we have some key dates. The teachers will submit the request uh and those requests by the 15th. Parents will submit their intent to stay hybrid or virtual by the 16th, and then we'll communicate parent assignments. One of the things I know is that um principals will be working with parents. We, we all heard the, the want or need to make a decision based on the teacher perhaps. So some, some parents may choose to, to stay with the teacher over going hybrid or virtual. And so we'll be talking through those kinds of processes. And then the schools will host meetings with all pre-K through three parents, discuss medication strategy. So we've given you some key timelines. We have about a page and a half of other um plans and other steps that we'll be taking in the next couple of weeks to ensure a, a smooth transition.
Okay, and all of the dates, especially the deadlines, will be, all of our teachers will be informed of those deadlines and all of our parents, et cetera, because it did appear to be sort of a question as to whether or not some deadlines were recognized. So that will all be, okay, or thank you.
We have, we, we have a notice ready to go to our, um, our teachers tomorrow morning, and that will start the ball rolling then.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, we are now down to other business by the board or by the superintendent?
I have questions about that presentation that we. So my issue is, one, I've heard from teachers, actually during the meeting, I heard from one, and I'm curious how we're going to be conveying to them. Her specific question is, what is the vision of how in-person learning will look and sound like? The way I interpret that is obviously it's going to be a very different teaching environment. We heard some of our public um comments about um preparation, even getting the classroom set because they haven't been in there. So how are you tackling that? And how are you going to convey information to the teachers?
Well, that's one of the things, the slide deck, and, and actually I will send that to you as soon as we get off the, out of the meeting. The, the principals did a slide deck. One of the things we talked about and they, they approved uh was to give the teachers two days at, right at the, the change of the nine weeks uh for pre-K through three key teachers to go in to set up classrooms. So we've, we've looked at how we can make that available to our teachers because we know that they will need some time uh to shift there. Uh, part of how the day will look is dependent on, on the standards of learning and what our expectations are when we are in school about the number of hours we have per subject area. So that will be part of the, the conversations around what a schedule will look like for the day um as well as what the asynchronous day will look like. Uh, we know we were going to be assigning teaching assistants to help students on those days uh as well as students being doing their synchronous specials. So all those kinds of pieces will be put together and will be communicated to parents very clearly about what a day would look like and what they can expect regarding uh the activities that the students will be doing. The, the positive pieces about the asynchronous day is now we're able to send materials home with students. And uh we feel like that has an added advantage over just simply doing a CSOL activity. We can send books home, we can send math materials, et cetera.
Okay, and I do uh want to make sure that our teachers are fully, that everything about this is fully communicated to them too, so that they will not feel left out of the loop because um we do truly appreciate everything that they have done. And we have to make sure that they are completely on board with this, you know, as far as timelines are concerned.
In communicating with parents, when are they, when are they going to have to make the decision on hybrid versus virtual?
I think it was uh the 15th, Patrick, if you can go back to the slide, I think it was the 15th or 16th.
Uh, parents have until next Friday, the 16th to um, to let us know.
And are we going to be able to provide them between now and then information about the nitty gritty of what are they going to be keeping their teacher? Who is the new teacher going to be? These kind of questions that are going to impact their decision. My worry is that we have gotten the complaint. I have heard from many parents that they feel like they're having to make decisions with a lack of data. And, and it's already, you tell me that we can't. I mean, I'm just curious. That's, that's on a lot of parents' minds.
The, the, the plan that we have in place, we need to know the number of students we have before we really can talk about the accommodations for staff. If we have 70% of our students coming, then we need 70% of our teachers. If we have 60% coming. But I would say, we heard you, I know uh Mr. Crenard is still on the, the, the call. And we will, I will talk to principals about that flexibility for parents who that they would prefer to keep the teacher than go hybrid or virtual. I don't know, Mr. Crenard, if you'd like to speak to that or not. I know that that would be something that principals would really um listen to and think about.
Yeah, that, that's something we did talk about.
Really quickly, just to provide guidance, I'm less concerned with people teaching or keeping their teachers. I'm more concerned with parents' ability to know what's happening as they move forward. So whether I keep the teacher or not, am I going to know that when I'm making the decision? Um, am I going to be able to back out of the decision? I know a lot of people feel like these are kind of binding contractual things. They can't ever. So that, that's what I'm looking for. Do you have answers around that?
I can go, I guess. Uh, I didn't know, Seth, if you wanted to say anything or not. Uh, we, the, the elementary principals, when in having this discussion, wanted to make sure that they had some guidance around that for parents so that they really could um count on the fact that once that there, there would not be a lot of in and out. Today I want to do this, tomorrow I want to do that. So they did say they did want it to be somewhat binding in the beginning so that we could really get settled uh and figure out the, how the matches were going to happen. But we will communicate all of that. The elementary principals will communicate that. We will communicate that in the survey that we'll be sending out tomorrow. I don't know that I answered your question.
Sorry, am I having body, I'm having bad body language as I'm listening. No, you are. And Debbie, it might just be that the answer is, you know, not an ideal, ideal answer because we're not in a situation where everything can be perfect. The survey, the reason why I, I was doing that, although I thought it was in my head and not in my actual body, was because we've been getting a lot of surveys. And I mean, even me as a school board member, I don't, you know, to have data kind of hidden in the surveys. A survey is not necessarily a good way to disseminate data to people. And so I don't know if we can be more purposeful in letting parents know this is what it looks like. You, especially since we're switching from stage three, and it takes a while for people to get on the same page. A lot of people, I mean, there are still parents out there that think we are moving to a stage three as we anticipated it in our initial vote. And it's not, it's very different. Um, so the more we can be proactive, and I know that, I just want to put that in the forefront because beyond the decision to move to stage three, the biggest piece of feedback I've gotten from teachers and parents, or not teachers, from parents um and families, is just what does this look like? And I think we can answer that hopefully before they make their decision.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Another key piece of information for parents will be what to do if their kid doesn't look right or has a fever when they wake up. Where do they, where do they log on so that they can keep up with some type of school? And if we make that really clear right up front, they won't be messing around with, oh, it might be okay enough to go. Just if there's any doubt, just log on here and you'll get some sort of instruction. So.
Perfect.
True, good point. Are there any other comments or business from board members or our superintendent?
Well, I would just say that, uh, you know, Mr. Page and I probably talk two or three times a week and we were talking going into this and pretty much agreed that uh either way, one of us was going to be saying what Mr. Page said. And I'd still say the same thing, that a, as a board, one of the things that I've, I've really, I really appreciate about our school board is the, the passion and, and the rigor that you all bring to this work. Um, I think it's commonly known now among school board members that we actually rehearse our presentations and rehearse our board meetings because we want to be prepared and we want to make sure that we're up to the challenge of presenting to the board and, and sharing with the board. And the kind of questions that you ask, they're, they're very intuitive and thoughtful and really get, get down to details, and it makes us better as a, as a team. And I think ultimately it makes us better as a school system. Um, I can imagine that there are many educators out there, based on the recommendation that I made, that may feel that I'm in some way not in favor of or not concerned about um our teachers. Uh, I would say that I certainly am. Um, I also have very, very high expectations uh for Almual County Schools employees. And I think that uh our customers are our families. And while I appreciate and understand that um many views will differ with mine, I accept that. Um, I, I do receive emails from employees letting me know they don't agree with me. I, I do receive emails from employees letting me know they don't agree with me. I appreciate that too, because it's just another perspective for me to work with. But I am still here to support you. It may not always seem like I'm supporting you in the way you want to be supported, but I'm still here to support you and I'm still going to make things right and work things out. The board is investing a lot of trust in us, not just in me, but in all of us to make this work. And I, I know we can make it work and we're going to make sure you have the resources that you need to make it work. So thank you again, school board, for your support and we'll, we're going to make it work.
Good, thank you, Dr. Haas.
Mr. Page, just one, one more thing. I, I would just like to say, thank you, Will, for being here through our four and a half hour school board meeting about a particularly challenging topic. I very much appreciated your input and insight. And I promise, I, Graham doesn't normally keep us quite this long, but thank you.
Hey, it's been, it's, it's, it's been a lot of fun. I think it really, I think this was about as much of a jumping into the deep end as you can get. So it's been, it, it educational and ready to see what else there is.
Okay, very good. We do have life preservers to toss to you, you know, when you jump into the deep end. So we aren't going to leave you hanging. Are there any other comments? Okay, if not, at 11 o'clock, our school board meeting, Alamo County Public Schools is adjourned. Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, Mr. Page.
Good night, Dr. Haas, see you later.
See you soon, take care.
Okay.